This April 4th regular meeting, the Littleton City Council to order. City Clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Schlatter.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Ryden.
She's walking in the door.
Is here. Councilmember Barr.
Here.
Councilmember Grove.
Here.
Councilmember Valdez.
Present.
Councilmember Milliman.
Here.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, next order of business is the approval of the agenda. Council, everyone's had a chance to go over the agenda. Any changes? Seen none. The agenda is approved without objection. Item four, comments and reports. We'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of council. Just one report tonight. As you all are aware, April marks the new year of our authorities, boards, and commissions season or year. And we know that we have, while we've been busily planning for all the liaison work with our boards and commissions, we realize that we still have one for council to formally appoint, one of the council liaisons, and that's for the Environmental Stewardship Committee, in brief conversation with Mayor Schlatter and Councilmember Barr. We would like to come back at your next meeting and have an appointment. We would like to bring a resolution to appoint Councilmember Barr to that spot. So it's not on tonight's agenda, but if council has any questions or anything else about that, please don't hesitate to reach out. But that's one actually we still need to take as we get the year going. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. City Attorney?
No report. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, go over to Councilmember Barr.
Yep, pulling up my notes here. Sorry about that. Okay, so, well, that was going to be one of my announcements is that I had maybe possibly might be appointed to the Environmental Stewardship Committee. So I'm looking forward to attending their first meeting tomorrow night, even prior to my appointment, so I can report back to council on the work ahead. I just also wanted to express my appreciation to the Next Generation Advisory Committee for their work this last year, and will be attending their meeting on Thursday. And this Next Generation Advisory Committee is going to be looking at a little bit more focused work topics related to housing, safety, economic development, infrastructure, environment, and youth and civic engagement. So if you're interested, please just reach out to me, and I'm happy to provide you with some more details as to what they'll be working on this year. Another announcement, I had attended the LPS Foundation Breakfast for the Epic Campus, the new vocational training campus that LPS is starting up in the 2023-2024 school year. I just wanted to point, I've spoken about it a number of times, so I won't go into detail as to what it is, but they are still looking for volunteers throughout our business community, throughout our industries locally. So if you know of or have an inclination of wanting to work with high schoolers, looking to get into some sort of trade, your business, any other kind of industry that you participated in, feel free to reach out to me. I'd be happy to put you in touch with the principal. They are still looking for volunteers and people to participate in the classes. Another point, Dr. Cog will be meeting tomorrow night for a special work planning session regarding SB 23-213, the land use and housing, the land use bill that is being proposed in the legislature right now. The Dr. Cog Board is going to deliberate and provide comment on this. In addition, Dr. Cog has just recently hired what's called a funding navigator. I'm only making this announcement because that is also my job during the day. But Dr. Cog is hiring a funding navigator for the municipalities within its jurisdiction to help them essentially access infrastructure bill funding. This is going to be a service that Dr. Cog provides to municipalities. I'm not sure if Keith needs another cook in that kitchen, but, you know, it is going to be a service that's going to be offered broadly throughout the region to access infrastructure bill funds. So it's really exciting to see that getting underway. I wanted to say too that I have been participating in the Arapahoe County Youth Awards Committee. So essentially, there are young folks, essentially graduating high school, on their way to further education at technical schools, or working, or college, or community college, that put in an application on a yearly basis to the county, describing how they've overcome hardships in their lives and how they've given back to the community in order to get a small award to kind of help them on their way. It was a really humbling process, quite honestly. Some of the stories that the youth put out there, that these, the folks that applied for this, that they put out there, these kids have undergone some pretty challenging situations in their home and personal life and are coming away strong and driven towards bettering their community. They were all so impressive. So I just want to say it was a real pleasure to serve on that committee and to help review these applications, and that if you're interested in seeing what those awards are, the award ceremony is coming in May. And then finally, my last announcement is I had an excellent discussion with members of Geneva Village this week. Not necessarily here to go into detail about Geneva Village, but I just wanted to say how much, you know, if any of them are listening, how much I appreciated them opening up their homes and talking about their lives. So thank you to those who are listening. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Grove?
Yes, last month I attended the State of the Arts Party at the Littleton Museum. It was a wonderful gathering of various people from various arts coming together and enjoying each other and the exhibits at the museum. So it was a wonderful event. I also attended the South Metro Denver Chamber Business Awards. That was over at the Lone Tree Art Center. Again, businesses getting together, networking, and then there were awards that were given, and we had members of staff there too. As the liaison to the South Platte Working Group, I attended a meeting on the 30th. They haven't met for a while, and they're looking at some new projects for the Platte River and area. One of their challenges is the Army Corps of Engineers, which is very difficult to work with, which we learned today, is part of it is their processes and part of it is the lack of staff. So the working group is coming together every other month to come up with some projects, and will probably be requesting some funding. They have enough funding till the end of the year, so it would be our 2024. South Suburban, they are going to have their elections on May 2nd. There's two openings. There's six candidates for the two openings. And you can get a ballot, a mail-in ballot, from the website if you want. The only trick is if, once you get it, you have to print it out, sign it, and either turn it in or mail it in. You can't scan it and return it electronically. There's two forums for the candidates, if you're interested. The Chamber, Littleton Chamber is hosting one on April 12th from 5:00 to 7:30, and you'll need to register with that, for that one, with the executive director, Corey. There's also one on April 15th at the Sports Complex, and that's at Holly and County Line, and that is at 10:00 a.m. So if you want to hear about the candidates, please go to one of those forums, and please vote. They don't have a great turnout, and they're very influential in our city. We want to get good candidates for those positions. In addition, we met today with our subcommittee meeting with South Suburban, and have a few announcements I think people will like. The Jackass Hill Meeting will be after their election in June, and that will be open for public comment, so people, citizens can come in and talk. For Littleton Golf and Tennis, as you've seen that building going up, I think the roof's going to go on pretty quick here. The target date to move in is August 18th, so that's pretty darn good, and they're going to have programming starting in September. So tennis players will be able to use that. We also heard about Hudson Gardens. They hired a new manager. Actually, it's a promotion from within, somebody that works at the Sports Complex. They are going to have the Littleton Symphony come perform, and they're looking at some comedy acts. So they are looking at some entertainment, and at the end of the year, we'll evaluate what the strategy will be about concerts going forward. The issue has to do with the lack of support staff. They can get the entertainers, but they can't get the security or the people to sell the food and wine or to clean up. There's just, South Suburban doesn't have that expertise, and the promoters that they are dealing with don't have it either. So that's kind of what the issue is. As we know, several of the bathrooms around the area at the parks have been closed due to vandalism. The Stern Park bathroom is due to open next week, provided they can get a door. They have to get a steel-timed door, and that's very expensive. So if the door comes in, hopefully the bathroom will be opened. As many of you know, we're also looking at a master development water plan, which will impact Geneva Lake, Kitterine Lake, and Ridgeview Pond, and that's in the works. I don't know how many of you are aware, but we have an historic city ditch that's very important to the history of Littleton, and it is in our jurisdiction, but Inglewood earns the water. So there's going to be some changes there in terms of pipes instead of just using an open ditch, and there is going to be some public engagement. And they will have it in Inglewood at the end of April, and they will have it in Littleton. The date they're looking at is May 3rd. So details to come. I don't have any location or timing on that. And that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
No report.
Councilmember Valdez?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to call up to everybody's attention, Channel 8, the new Around Town with Jim has a new feature on there, and this time it is the Historic Ditch, and I thought it was very good. I had a chance to view it. It was really good, so, well done. Also, last week I did attend the National League of Cities Conference that was in Washington, DC. There were a lot of interesting meetings, of course, and for those of you that have been, I know it's worthwhile to go to. I think for those of you who haven't been, I really encourage you to go. I also had the opportunity to meet with a large group of people with our US, both of our US senators. I also met with our, well, at least with my congressional district rep, Jason Crow. It was a very productive meeting. We mostly discussed transportation funding, especially focusing on Santa Fe and Mineral. And the city manager will be contacting Congressman Crow's office, hopefully this week, is our goal, to encourage them to support funding for that. I also told him that it was 90,000 people that travel through that intersection every day. So while not all of them are his representatives, it would be good just for everybody involved. Let's see, we also discussed a little bit about the Senate Bill, Colorado State Senate Bill 216. I had a chance to read Senate Bill 216. I'm sorry, 213, I'm sorry, 213, Senate Bill 213. And that, it's a bill where the governor essentially takes over certain zoning for most cities and towns in the state of Colorado, including Littleton. And that's something I would encourage everybody to go read it. While it's, I think it's at least 125 pages, at least the version I read, and it's bound to change again. Most of it is just, you know, definitions and stuff, so it doesn't, you don't have to read the whole doggone thing, I guess. But what it will do though, it'll take away Littleton's control over how we zone our city. And we just spent about four or five years having meetings, multiple meetings with citizens of Littleton on how we want to see our city in the future and how it should be zoned. This would take away much of the control that we have today as our city, been able to control them ourselves. So what I would hope the citizens will do is maybe read part of the bill or all the bill and make their own decision and call their representatives to state what their opinion is on the thing. I am admittedly opposed to Senate Bill 213. I do believe it's a state overreach. It takes away our city zoning. So I believe that is it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Milliman?
Just a quick little add-on to PM Grove's comments tonight. I also attended the State of the Arts at the Littleton Museum. It was really, really fun. It was, it was a good event. I think it was their second year in a row, and they did talk about everything that's going on currently in the city of Littleton and what's to come with our leadership with the Littleton Arts and Culture Commission. It was a really, really fun event. They had an artist there actually doing her work, and it just made me proud and excited to live in the city of Littleton. The other thing is, I also attended the South Suburban Parks and Rec, was that a quarterly luncheon today? I believe it was. Anyway, I'll just add on a couple things. The Littleton Golf and Tennis, that grand opening is to be determined. They haven't, they haven't said exactly when the grand opening is going to be, and for any of you that are pickleball fans like me, unfortunately, there's no pickleball courts at this one. Also, our Public Works Department has been working on a master, a master water, master water development plan for quite a while, and I believe that's going to come to council sometime in May, where they're going to talk about supply and demand of water here in the city of Littleton. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes, just to piggyback on Councilwoman Grove, South Suburban Park Renew River Cleanup is on the 22nd. I don't know if you mentioned that or not, but they're meeting at Riverside Downs at 9 o'clock. It goes from 9 until noon, so anybody that wants to come down to clean up Mary Carter and the river and everything, love to see a good turnout there. Also, I'm just reminding everybody watching, see Click Fix. That's something that you can report anything happening around the city, whether it's pothole, graffiti, whatever it is, the city and staff does a great job on responding to those concerns. So when you go onto littletongov.org, you can just type in the search box, See Click Fix, and find the map where you'll show us what's going on, and see, it'll respond. So that's it.
All right, thank you. On my end, piggybacking off of what Councilmember Valdez said regarding Senate Bill 213, there was a luncheon with Arapahoe County delegation of councilors, mayors, county commissioners two weeks ago that we met with our delegation of senators and representatives down there to kind of talk to them about some of the concerns that we had with Senate Bill 213. Along those lines as well, there was an Arapahoe County Housing Town Hall, Telephone Town Hall last Thursday that I was part of. It was hosted by Arapahoe County. The commissioners were there, and the mayors from the various cities in Arapahoe County were there, talked about the housing efforts that are going on in Arapahoe County, and kind of talked about what 213 might mean. Also along 213, I met with the Metro Mayor's Executive Committee and the Governor's Office the Friday morning after that Telephone Town Hall to kind of express our concerns. They said they had potential amendments for the bill lined up. I don't know what they were. They didn't say what they were, but it will be in the Senate Local Government and Housing Committee this Thursday. So if anyone's interested going down to speak to that, you can go down there. We'll see what comes out of that committee meeting, if there are any amendments like that. So that's all I have on 213. On Saturday, I took part in the first-ever Littleton Social Cycle. We met at Stern Park and biked around town for about five miles. We went up down Stern Parkway, up Crocker, over on Powers, and stopped downtown for some coffee and some ice cream. It was a great turnout. There were about 30 people that participated, which was far exceeded the organizers, what they thought was going to happen there. So that was the first one on April 5th, and the next one is on April 6th, again, meeting at Stern Park. I think this will be a little bit longer, a bike ride, about 10 miles. The first one was five miles, but it's open to everyone. It's nice, slow cruising bike ride, so meet some people and hang out. One of my other liaison positions is with Mile High Flood District. They're having their annual symposium on April 11th. It's an all-day event, in-person event. It will be at the Sheridan Downtown Denver, and it's a full-day conference, kind of on, kind of a Councilmember Barr's alley there of water, waterways, urban flood management, things like that. So if anyone's interested, you go to the Mile High Flood District website, take a look at that. Speaking of Mile High Flood District, they are moving, I believe they have moved, to their new offices. They used to be kind of close to downtown Denver, but now they're moving out to 12575 Bayard Avenue out in Lakewood, and will have our first district meeting, I believe it's on April 20th, in a couple weeks out there. So they're very excited to be out there. I'm looking forward to seeing that new building in person. And then finally, the Littleton Public Schools Spirit Celebration is coming up here in about 10 days, on April 14th, at Infinity Park. It's a fundraising event, auction dinner, fun times for raising funds for the Littleton Public Schools Foundation. So if anyone's interested in that, you can go to their website and check that out. So that is all I have on my end. All right, item five is schedule appearances. We do not have any scheduled appearances tonight. Item six, proclamations. We do have a proclamation tonight. All right. So we have proclamation proclaiming, "April 9th to April 15th, 2023, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Littleton. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas thousands of dedicated telecommunications professionals serve the people of this country every day by answering phone calls for police, fire, and emergency medical services, dispatching appropriate assistance quickly and efficiently. And whereas the 911 Communications Center for the city of Littleton performs a critical function and are a key link in the public safety chain, which protects all of us, and are constantly striving to improve their emergency response capabilities through leadership, dedication, and technology, processing on over average over 100,000 calls a year. And whereas the safety of our police officers in Littleton are dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who call the city of Littleton 911 Communication Center. And whereas Littleton's 911 communications staff are the single vital link for our police officers by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, each one exhibits compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job every day of the year. And whereas by the United States Congressional Proclamation, the Association of Public Safety Communications Officials International, a worldwide telecommunications organization composed of more than 35,000 people engaged in the operation, installation, and design of emergency response communication systems, has set aside the second week of April to recognize the contributions made by telecommunicators and their crucial role in protection for everyone's life and property. And now therefore be resolved, I, Kyle Schlatter, Mayor of the city of Littleton, to hereby proclaim the week of April 9th, 15th, 2023, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Littleton, to honor the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe, and to commend the Littleton 911 Communication Center for their dedication in providing service 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year." I take a breath here. All right, item seven is public comment. Thank you. So if you wish to address the city council under public comment, please sign in on the speaker form. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. When you get your time, I will let you know. City council is not authorized by Colorado Open Meeting Laws to discuss, comment, or take action at the meeting on any issue raised by public comment that is not part of tonight's agenda. I may refer the matter to the city manager or attorney for immediate comment after public comment, or to staff to attain further information and report back to council. Ask everyone in the audience to please be respectful and quiet while others are talking. Call those who have signed up to come speak and see if there's anybody else that would like to after. First one, I have Michael Edwards.
Hello, Mayor and city council members. My name is Michael Edwards. I'm a candidate for the South Suburban Parks and Recreation District Board of Directors election on May 2nd. Thank you for bringing that to their attention. For more information, all of the candidates' bios are on the website at ssprd.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Kronberger.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. I'm in District 2 at 5796 South Lakeview Street. I am here tonight to talk about automobile, the automobile center of the universe, which is Littleton, Colorado. Historically, Littleton was the automobile center because we were the economic center in this region. However, as the suburban population grew around us, the automobile businesses did not spread out. Two years ago, Littleton lost two very good mid-century modern buildings to a gas station. I decided to count the number of stations we have in Littleton. Surprisingly, I counted 28 total gas stations within the city limits. Monday, the Planning Commission approved the development of another gas station at Bellevue in Santa Fe. This would be primarily a truck service station, so now we'll have 29 gas stations, with potentially several more planned around the city. This amounts to approximately one gas station for every 1,600 people in the city of Littleton. Even more absurd, that amounts to about one gas pump for every 348 people. And that might even be on the high side. I did not count them all, though. There are five gas stations within a half a mile of my house on Lakeview Street. The areas adjacent to our borders are gas station deserts. The areas adjacent to our borders are gas station deserts. You have to go 1.6 miles east of Littleton for the nearest station, 1.2 miles west for the nearest station, and one mile north to get to the nearest station from our borders. This means that people are driving to and through Littleton to get their gas to the detriment of our community. And this does not include other car needs, such as lube oil changes, repair shops, dealerships, parts stores, which probably number well over 50. Just think about the environmental impacts our citizens have to endure, including noise, air, water, and light pollution. Speaking of light, these stations are so bright, they could probably be seen from the space station. On a positive note, I counted at least eight old traditional gas stations, some historic, others that could be, that no longer have gas pumps but are now being used as restaurants, coffee shops, free retail shops, and soon, a brewery. The new stations, the new gas stations cannot be adaptively reused like the older ones and contribute to the negative characteristics of Littleton. Our quality of life and traffic problems generated by all the gas stations is much greater than any amount of housing would create. After all, everybody's traveling to Littleton to get their gas. I encourage the City Council to immediately implement a moratorium on new, on new gas stations. I think the community would agree that we have enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Next up is Karen Calentire.
I would like to read you a story. Any resemblance between this story and actual events is totally and absolutely in every way coincidental. Many years ago, there was an empire which thought it was a republic. How it got that way was, one day, two rogues, calling themselves Election System vendors, showed up with a voting system, the Emperor 2023 Super System, and its amazing cloaking device. The cloaking device, they explained, was magic with a wondrous characteristic. It was transparent, genuinely transparent, they explained, but only smart people could see through it. Anyone who is not smart enough would just see an opaque box. "This is fantastic," thought all the officials. "Not only do we get a spiffy new voting system, but we can find out who is smart around here and get rid of all the stupid people." So some of them were a bit disturbed the day the voting system was displayed. It didn't seem very transparent. "What time is he unveiling? When they take it out of the boxes?" one of the officials asked. A shiver of shock ran through the crowd. Slowly, everyone turned and looked at the official. "I'm so very sorry, but it's been sitting here unveiled the whole time," one of the vendors smoothly said. "Can't you see? So sorry." "Perhaps a new job digging trenches would be more suitable for this poor guy?" he inquired of the other officials. "Yes, yes," they said, hurriedly getting the guy out of the room. Then they all rushed back and started agreeing loudly with each other as the vendors pointed out all the features smart people could clearly see inside the box. One of the officials actually had a PhD in computer science, and he felt this transparent system was surprisingly opaque. But then he remembered a few rather dumb things he had done, and he remembered what it felt like to be pushed into his locker by a crowd of mocking students in seventh grade. So he nodded wisely as the vendors pointed out feature after feature. Everybody else looked at him, nodding, then gulled, and started oohing and aahing over the wonderful voting system, which made pleasant slicing and dicing noises when it was turned on. Suddenly, a voter wandered in with a ballot. He was obviously not an expert on anything. You might say, "He was the sharpest spoon in the knife drawer." But he had managed to graduate from high school. "Just put your ballot in here," said one of the officials. "You're kidding," said Mr. Box of Rocks. "Why would I put it in that box? I can't see what's inside that thing. How do I know that's not a shredder?" Everybody guessed, as they realized the thing did look and sound remarkably like a shredder. There was a moment as everyone considered whether to believe the experts or their own lying eyes. This is a choose-your-own-adventure story. The ending is up to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Next up, Pam Chetbourne.
Good evening, Council. My name is Pam Chetbourne. I live a block and a half from here. So first, I, thanks to Rick for his comments about Planning Commission Monday was terrible. There's no right to rezoning. It shouldn't have been passed. It's a 24/7 hour thing, and the concept is, well, it's market. It's not market. When you put it at the intersection, all the other gas stations are going to suffer. Littleton has an obligation to our businesses. It was a violation in many ways. It should not have passed. We need better regulation, and you guys need to pass better criteria for that kind of stuff. Second, and maybe related, the First Environmental Stewardship Committee is tomorrow, and I don't think we should need a committee. I don't see why we need so many committees. We're a little town. I think we can do much more with you folks. We keep splitting up government, which is more expensive and requires more and more time, and we get less and less done. How is that, anyway? I'm glad that if it has to exist, we've got it, and I wish you good luck and success. Third, I want to talk about the IGA for the DDA operations cost for the first year. 180K in services from city staff. And I wanted you to, I want to request that you guys change the IGA to provide a loan for the money and the cost of services to be paid back after the DDA gets its first year revenue next year from Arapahoe County. And first, I want to say I did hear that the DDA asked for a much larger amount, and that there was a preliminary inquiry, and that was discouraged, and thank you. And that's a good job, and continue that. So I'm also going to say that decisions should include pros and cons. Wouldn't it be nice if staff had provided for the option of a loan, not a gift, in the staff communication? And that would have included the estimated 2022 revenue that the DDA is about to get. I heard that it's very substantial, in that they'll be able to pay back their ops cost very readily, plus accomplish what they want to get done. They're a new organization. They don't have a lot that's urgent. They have a few things that are really important, but they're just standing up, and they need to take it slow. You know, we used to call it walk before you run. And so they don't need a lot of money to accomplish what they have to do. And so, and I'm also going to say, whatever their budget is, I think government should live within that. So whatever they get next year, they should be able to budget what they owe from this year and are going to do next year, because they need to live within their means. So, and finally, the city has other uses for the ARPA money and for staff time, which we, the city, should get, not the DDA. So please, change it from a gift to a loan, and make them pay it back. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Is there anybody else in attendance that would like to come down and speak? Don't see anyone. All right. Does the City Manager or City Attorney have any response to anything from public comment?
I do not, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Item eight is the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items can be adopted by a simple motion. All ordinances must be read by title. Pardon to a vote on the motion, any consent agenda item may be removed at the request of a council member. We have, item A is Ordinance 8, 2023, An Ordinance on First Reading Approving a New Communication Circuit Three-Year Agreement with Lumen for a Dispatch Connection to the State of Colorado Public Safety Radio System. Item B is ID 2353, Motion to Approve Minutes of the March 21st, 2023 Regular Meeting of City Council.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items A and B.
And I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will open the voting.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you. Next up, item nine is General Business. We have several items on General Business. Item A is Resolution 36, 2023, Resolution Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement between the City of Littleton and the Littleton Downtown Development Authority, the LDDA, for Downtown Development Authority Support and Services. So we'll have a brief presentation by staff, and I believe the DDA representatives will be here as well, and then we can ask some questions. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the Littleton voters approved our Downtown Development Authority in the November 8th election. Since then, I know, and since the, the Authority Board was seated, they've been working very hard on their, really, their first two main projects. And those, as a DDA, are to form or finalize an intergovernmental agreement with, with the city that governs the relationship between, between the, the city and the Downtown Development Authority. And then the second big project is the Plan of Development, which will outline and come before council for their projects and what the actual work will be that the, that the Authority will achieve. But the first step is, is tonight, and we're very pleased to have an, an IGA for your consideration. As you'll see, the IGA does outline the responsibilities of both agencies, as the, the DDA is a, is its own separate legal entity. And I can just say, and then I'll stop and turn over to the group, that I know that since the, since the, the discussions of the DDA had been happening last year, and I'm sure even prior, there had been some anticipated need for city financial support in the first year of the DDA, as its revenues really do not start and will not really be realized till its, its second year and even into that year. So with that, I'm going to turn over to our Assistant City Manager Kathleen Osher, who can also introduce our, our DDA guest this evening, and they can give an overview of the IGA, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kathleen Osher, Assistant City Manager. I'm joined this evening by Jenny Starkey with Starkey Strategies, and she serves as the interim director for the LDDA. And then Rob Steeg, our second vice chair of the Board of Directors for LDDA. So pleased to have them this evening. I think City Manager Becklinburg has done a good job of overviewing where we are in the, in the process, so I don't know that I have a lot to add this evening. I think if you have questions, we'd love to be available to answer those. And it may make sense, Jenny, or would you or Rob, want to run through that IGA real quickly? I think it's just that, that high level of roles and responsibilities with LDDA and then with the city.
Thank you. My name is Rob Steeg. I am the co-chair tonight, standing in for Ruth, who is spending time with her new grandson, which is pretty exciting. So it's been time in the coming. We, we had a meeting a week ago, and she wasn't able to attend, but finally, the baby came, and it seems like everything's going well. So you have me tonight. We also have Krista and Greg Renke, who are also on the LDDA board, and they can certainly answer any questions that we have as well. We have been working hard, thank you, meeting every two weeks to kind of work through some of the initial stand-up items for the LDDA. And we, we really appreciate your support. Councilman Driscoll's up in that liaison and has participated in all the meetings and offered some guidance as well. LDDA is focused on standing up a strong and committed organization. I think the people that you have appointed to this board are, symbolize that. There's a lot of dedication, a lot of excitement for people to get moving and start carrying out what our mission is, I think. So kind of pull the reins back. We've put together the IGA, which you have, I'm assuming, in your packet, and you've reviewed. So if there's any questions that go in through there, kind of a standard document, I would say. I don't think there's any real big issues, other than showing our willingness to communicate and work with the city, and sort of a vice versa there, so that we can be, serve you as our committee, as you've helped us as well. We've used this model from other DDAs in Colorado. We've had some contact with the DDA from Englewood. They've been very helpful and excited for us to get our DDA moving forward. So thank you to them as well. And I would imagine, and they've offered, to continue to be a resource, because they're a little bit further along in this process, and to help us and help us harness our excitement and move forward. We've also included a budget with this, with the IGA, that kind of outlines what our, our expected costs would be for the next year or so, that include some staff time, which I think was anticipated as the council put together the DDA submission. We have insurance that we're required to keep, bookkeeping, legal services. We have Lisa, who's been helping us as well, great resource. And then we have some communications numbers in there. And I think for right now, the, that is kind of our biggest give-back, if you will, our first kind of project, if you will, to make sure that we interact with the community at a very high level and make sure that they're informed of what our processes are, how we're going about to meet the goals and objectives of the DDA. And that is a, a budget number that we've generated from experience from Englewood. And Jenny has also helped us put that together. And these operate, these are operating costs for the DDA until our funds start rolling in. There's a certain timeframe that is mandated by the county, I believe, that until we can start receiving those funds that are generated through the tax revenue. So in order to get that moving, this is, we are requesting the ARPA funds based on this budget to get that up and running, established. And then when those funds start coming in, we're going to be planning well in advance to how those, to best allocate those funds for the benefit of, of the city. We, as I said, we have a lot of excited people on this committee, and we've all sort of slipped into a mode where we, we want to do things. We're ready to go. We're ready to run. So I hope that we can take that energy to our next step and start proposing projects, working with the city, working with the community to find out the best way to use those dollars. There's going to be short-term projects, there'll be longer-term projects, and there'll be midterm projects. We'll have to help establish what those projects are and when they can be done, and what the funding is that's required. And we're exploring other funding sources as well to help support those. And we'll obviously work with the city. I, I think some of that participation from the city, in some certain cases, or in combination with the DDA, will be helpful and produce more strength as we work with you all here. And for, for tonight, we are asking that the IGA is approved with the attached budget for your consideration, and we'd be welcome to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you. Any questions, Council? Mayor Protam?
Several questions. Hi. I'll start with one. Can you talk more about how the members of the DDA will demonstrate sort of transparency, especially around conflict of interest?
Can I have Lisa answer that question for us?
Absolutely.
I think that's more of a, I don't want to be unlegal.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Mayers. I'm with the law firm Spencer Fain, and I've been working with the new Authority Board and helping them work through some of the requirements of the statute, one of which is conflicts of interest. We have adopted, or the, the Authority has adopted rules of procedure. One of the rules specifically addresses conflicts of interest. And as part of the rules of procedure, we have also adopted the city's rules of conduct for board and commission members and the disclosure requirements that the city itself has adopted. Those are actually appended to the rules of procedure. Also, the rules of procedure require each of the board members to do an annual statement of conflicts of interest. It's based on the Secretary of State's form, so it's an extensive three or four-page questionnaire that we, we, we've had each of the board members actually complete. We're maintaining those in the Authority's files. Those are available for public inspection, and those will be done on an annual basis as required by the rules of procedure. The, an additional item that we have is on our regular agendas. An additional item that we have is on our regular agendas. One of the first matters is a disclosure of conflicts, and based on the agenda before the board, we'll have that discussion at the beginning of each meeting. You know, these are the items on the agenda. Are there any matters that need to be discussed by the board to disclose any potential conflict? We've talked through these items, what constitutes a conflict, what needs to be disclosed, what happens if there is a conflict or a potential conflict, how we would handle that at meetings. It's been very much top of the mind for the board members. Obviously, they're business owners, they're residents, they're individuals, all with existing relationships in the city. And so we've had that discussion. We've talked about why it's important. It's top of the mind for all of our board members, and it's something that we will be visiting on a regular basis, especially as we start looking at projects and contracts and, you know, who do they speak with with respect to obtaining insurance and going to the local community, banking relationships? It's all matters that are actively talked about in the public meetings for the board. So top of the mind will continue to be top of the mind. Thank you.
Thank you to Lisa for keeping us.
And I guess I can answer any questions if there's any questions.
Thank you for Lisa.
I think the city attorney.
Yeah, I was just going to echo Ms. Mayers in regard to this, specifically with under the Downtown Development Authority statute, state statute, there's also conflict of intersection. So not only is there state statute that governs that, everything else that the DDA has done, as Ms. Mayers just alluded to, is above and beyond to make sure that they're not having those sort of conflicts.
So I just want to restate, Lisa, I think what I heard was at each meeting, when there is a financial anything voted on that someone will say, like explicitly, is there any conflict of interest?
Well, we're going to actually have it as an agenda item.
At each meeting?
Correct.
Awesome.
So beginning of the meeting, you know, here's the agenda. Based on this agenda, do board members have items or conflicts or potential conflicts? I think it's always something to look both at. Yes, a direct conflict, but also something that might potentially be a conflict, and asking to kind of vet those every meeting. You know, these are the items on the agenda. Let's talk about if anybody has a relationship or a concern that they want that they want to talk about or need to talk about.
Excellent. Thank you.
Councilmember Grove or Councilmember Barr?
All right. Actually, kind of winging off of Mayor Protam's question there, would you be able to explain to me a little bit more about the procurement processes that you're going to be laying out? Would those also be in those rules of procedure? Have those been decided on already? Or could you elaborate on what kinds of procurement best practices? I think the language in the agreement as it stands, I know, is very generic and superficial at this time, but please elaborate if you could.
I don't think we have a lot of detail in the rules of procedure. We've had discussion amongst the board, the board members have. We've looked at the city procurement processes, but understand that those are not available to the to the authority. What the discussion has been so far is really a focus on, to the extent, a service or a good can be obtained in the city. The preference is to do that partly because it's a downtown development authority, it's supporting business, it's wanting to stay located in the community. And so I think establishing procurement rules are probably something that will come in the future, but the focus has been in the city. When the issue of insurance came up, it was suggested that we contact Lattenbach Insurance, but also any other insurance provider in the city. And Jenny actually did quite a bit of legwork, going, one, identifying all the insurance brokers in the city, but also contacting all of the insurance brokers to see what they could do on behalf of the authority. And I think you contacted nine, nine insurance brokers, but making it a fair playing field for for any business, any entity that has the potential to do business with with the authority. And with the authority members recognizing they can't have a financial interest in any of these transactions. So as part of the conflict review, it directly applies to the procurement process and having those discussions, obviously, on an ongoing basis.
I appreciate that, and thank you for going to such lengths to procure some of these first items. I know not having those rules and procedures in place and then trying to obtain those goods and services can be a bit of a tricky space, and I would just say, I would like to see the DDA in its kind of formative process, make sure those are established before large-ticket items, you know, kind of go out the door. But no, thank you for doing your due diligence. It's appreciated.
Councilmember Grove?
This is maybe a member question for staff. What is the projected tax for the once they start collecting tax, which is next year or the year after? What is the projected income?
We're in the process of figuring that out with the county, so we've just finalized the map, so we should know that in relatively short order. But that is something that we've been working through with the county, knowing that our deadline is roughly sort of the June timeframe to solidify a lot of those things. We know that that's an important moment for us to be able to to know that in our own budgeting process of the city. We will have to show that as part of the city budget. And so a little bit of to be known, so we look forward to bringing that back. It may be that it can coincide with the Plan of Development, that we can share that with council, because first, that Plan of Development will go to Planning Commission and then come to City Council. So we look forward to sharing that as soon as we know.
I can't remember, but the percentage of the tax, is that predetermined by the state or is that determined by the actual governing board?
So the it's a combination, so it's a tax increment finance, so that would be setting a base year, which once that Plan of Development, that would sort of set that base year. Once that's adopted by council, we anticipate the base year to be 2022, so last year. So any proceeds above and beyond what was collected in 2022 would then be the increment that comes to the LDDA. The additional tax would be a mill levy, up to three mills. We had anticipated during the feasibility study that roughly each of those mills collects about $50,000. So again, we're working with the county to verify what those amounts would be, and I think the board of the LDDA will determine if they would basically get all consider all three of those mills or do some increment of that as well.
And based on our public comment earlier, was it ever discussed to have a loan as opposed to just an outright gift?
Yeah, I think we've looked at both. Our understanding from internal conversations is that ARPA is really tailor-made for this sort of one-time expense in support of business communities, but particularly downtown communities that were hit so hard by COVID. So I think that that's why staff has recommended the funding this through ARPA as opposed to looking at a loan.
One of the other challenges, just to add to that, is, as you're aware, there's a deadline in which those ARPA monies are supposed to be refunded. So in terms of one of the comments I heard during public comment is, you know, why wasn't there a loan, to your question? The fact would be, by the time that the DDA started receiving TIF and becoming more of viable, I guess, on their own, there would not have there would not be an ability to repay that before the deadline. I think the deadline to expend those monies is 2024, or else we just lose them.
Have we looked at I know we've had this left this surplus of funds and ARPA funds that we haven't spent. Have we looked at any other options for them besides of this? I mean, there was like lists of things we might spend it on.
Yeah, so right now, roughly, there's 276,000 uncommitted, but appropriated through ARPA funding. There are a series of things that we have explored. I think that we're working within the confines of what is eligible under those ARPA guidelines. And so again, with the eligibility fitting so nicely with the support of both the local business community and particularly the downtown, I think that's why staff is supporting the ARPA, committing those or choosing those uncommitted funds to help support the formation year for LDDA.
And then my last question has to do with the budget. It doesn't have anything in it, but what is election administration? And the second one, what is clean and safe?
Election administration actually doesn't have a budget item, so it's that's a mistake and should be removed from that draft.
Okay, so that's and then what is clean and safe?
So clean and safe really addresses public realm crime and safety. In the in public realm, the standard things that would be addressed are, again, clean and safe, and that could be anywhere from programs to weekly power washing of sidewalks, buildings, bus stations, whatever might need to be cleaned, graffiti removal, cigarette butt removal, et cetera. If there are, obviously, every every city is dealing with our unhoused neighbors, and if there are any particular leave-behinds that need to be addressed, that is also part of a clean and safe program. The safety issue or the safety component of clean and safe could be programmatic elements such as developing a more structured relationship with communication resource or community resource officers with the police department, or bringing in private security resource officers to address better business solutions to address crime and safety. For instance, how to best analyze a ground floor level retail operation that might need assistance, looking at protocols such as bettering their window displays to have less risk associated with crime at night, or looking at evaluating lighting and signage options for business retailers. So that's why you see very, very minimal amounts here, because it wouldn't be a substantial program to begin with, because just frankly, those funds aren't there yet. But when the Plan of Development is approved, then I do believe that the board of the DDA will go back in partnership with the police department to look at a more robust program to evaluate where crime and safety is, what needs to be done, what the community is asking for, and what those potential programs could look like that would fit a budget and operational plan for the next three to five years.
Any other questions? Councilmember Driscoll?
Yeah, Rob, would you address there were some concerns about the executive director position, but we also had some conversations around sharing that responsibility with Inglewood. Can you update council a little bit on the thought on that?
Do you want to take that or?
I'm happy to.
Okay.
It does, it does, right? Yeah, Jenny, go for it.
Jenny answers.
I was unaware that there were there was a conversation of sharing the executive director relationship with Inglewood, but I do know Hillary Portell well, who is running Inglewood DDA for now, and I'd be surprised if she had that bandwidth and capacity. And actually, she's the one who introduced me to Kathleen for this role, so I can't specifically speak to that. But is there?
Maybe I misspoke. I mean, it was just conversation we had in one of the meetings that, you know, to offset the cost early on.
Right. I think that's one of our next tasks is to look at that. I've spoken with Ruth about it, and I've spoken with Jenny about it, on how we look at what that director position looks like, who the best person to do that and help us with, and the costs associated with that. I think that we may have talked about it early on, but I don't think the capacity's there, quite frankly. So we were we are going to evaluate Jenny's role as it's been up to date and going forward and how the board feels about that. So that's one of our next agenda items. Did that answer your question? The question was a little threw us a little bit, but I do know what you're talking about now.
I'd also add, Councilman Driscoll, there has been conversation of also adding an executive or administrative assistant to the LDDA staff as a part-time employee that would then help offset some of those hours for an executive director. So some of those things that you probably see me doing and printing out name tags and agenda items and email back and forth could be potentially offset by a lower hourly rate for an administrative assistant.
Any other questions? I guess, piggybacking off that question with the so you said there the Inglewood executive director wouldn't have the bandwidth to so is the Inglewood director full-time position?
No, she and I'm just speaking from lunches I have had with her, so she would probably have to be be specific about this. But from what I understand, she currently serves as a part-time director, and I'm not sure what those hours look like for the Inglewood Development Authority, as well as a part-time director for the Colfax Mayfair Business Improvement District.
Okay, thank you. I have a question for city staff. I emailed, and you got back to me, but I just wanted to make sure it was out there in public with the IGA. It had let me bring up the question actually here. It stated that the city HR will provide services and resources for the DDA. I know in a conversation I had with the city manager that I didn't think was going to be the case, but can you discuss that?
Yes, and actually, the provision within the IGA is for program or services and resources relative to independent contractors. So that's somewhat minimal, what we provide in terms of supporting independent contractors. One thing that I could imagine is we do have a professional services agreement, so that might be something that LDDA might want to replicate in terms of contracting with their staff. So that is discreet to independent contractors and the services and resources provided to those.
Mayor, I might just speak generally to the various services that you might see. You know, it is it is true that the DDA is a separate organization from the city, but of course, we are going to work more closely together, and I believe the agreement reflects, you know, resources without the actual services provided by the city, but just acknowledges in those various areas in the in the IGA where the city might be able to offer expertise without providing the services directly, both because they are a separate agency and also because we, in all cases, you know, are we have capacity for city services and not another agency. But we certainly do want to be helpful, and I think the agreement was calling out some of the areas like this one with the independent contractors, where the city has some experience and expertise, and we want to be a resource and be helpful to the DDA in any ways that we can.
Great. So city will not be the HR department for the LDDA or the finance department for?
Correct, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before I entertain a motion? Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 36-2023, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Littleton and the Littleton Downtown Development Authority, LDDA, for Downtown Development Authority Support and Services.
Second.
All right, so there is a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just want to throw my support behind this. Obviously, this has been a long time coming, upwards of probably close to three years now. I'm very proud of what this group has accomplished in a short amount of time. It's meetings every two weeks. I don't think another board is that diligent about getting this thing put together, and as Rob stated, very passionate about moving forward. And this year, of course, is more of administrative, and next year's can be really exciting in the years going forward. Will be really a lot of fun to see what this group comes up with and how we can really enhance the boundaries of the DDA. So I'm fully in support of this.
Councilmember Milliman?
I'm going to correct you. Greg Renke just said it was five years in the making. Yeah. So I too want to express my support behind all this. I think it's great, and it has been a long time coming, and I know there's been a lot of blood, sweat, and tears put into it. Our voters, our citizens, voted to approve the formation of the LDDA and funding for it as well. And I'm happy that the city has those ARPA funds to be able to help get this off the ground and get it running so you can become independent, which I know you will, and this is going to be hugely successful and so good for the city. So thank you.
Councilmember Valdez, were you going to say something?
Hi.
No, nothing to say? Okay. You look like you're about to talk.
Nope, I'm ready to move on.
Anything else? Any other comments for anyone? Councilmember or Mayor Protam?
Thank you. So I believe that getting the legal
So, I believe that getting the legal side of this set up and doing it right is a really great investment, so I'm really glad, Lisa, and you're on board, and I know there's some time sensitivity to that, just per other, like, state statutes, so I understand the expeditiousness of having that money available, and again, with the conflict of interest and things like that, I know those are real legally things, so I appreciate that that's being front and center, and I also know that that does cost money, and I see that as a really good investment, where, and, and that I think definitely fits with the American Rescue Plan vision and the timing of that money. Where I'm a little bit more murky on is that crime and safety programs, that budget item that's in there, that seems really broad and not, like, it could cover everything, like you were saying, Jenny, and I'm not so sure that the DDA is the best in the first year to make those decisions around those budgetary items, like, I think that is bigger conversations that we're having and nonprofits are having, and so that, I'm a little bit more cautious to fund something like that, because it's not very specific. And, I mean, I see the legal side being definitely investing a lot of that on the front end in this first year, but that seems more like a year two, or maybe a quarter four type project. So, if there, if there's a way we can either scratch that, or I can amend the budget to not include that, that's what I would ask for. Is there a way to do that?
I'm not sure we can amend their budget, but I have a question for the city attorney about that, so I think this is their budget, not ours.
Yeah, it would certainly be within the realm of the DDA to make decisions as to what they would be putting monies forward on. Just in my cursory review of, of kind of the spreadsheet and the budget, if you will, I mean, there, there are different funding sources coming into that ultimately. I mean, not only are we talking about the city and the grant, if you will, using ARPA funds, but there's also the ad valorem mills that will be coming in, which are probably better suited for that sort of security-type role, rather than these funds that would be coming in. I mean, ultimately, when they get TIF, and that money starts coming in, there's going to be a lot more stricter, I guess, uses towards those funds, in terms of what a DDA is formed for, what those monies can go towards. So, I'm not sure if I'm answering the question, if we can amend their, their line item, the answer would be no.
Okay, well, maybe I can ask this question. I really want to support it, and I want to give that money, because again, I really want to set you up for success. A lot of folks have worked really hard on this, but I think if it's, if, if your budget stays as, as it is right now, with that specific thing, that I would have to vote no.
And can I just add, with the adoption of a budget, so prior to some of the formation work that we've done, the LDDA did adopt a zero-revenue, zero expenditure budget per state statute, and held a public hearing for that. That is a requirement as they amend that budget, which with this new revenue, they would have to go through a process of amending that. It would be a public hearing, there would be an opportunity for a public comment, and the board would then reflect that as part of their overall process to adopting a final budget. So, this budget before you is, is a draft budget, and would have to go through that public hearing process. I'll check with the, both interim director and, and first, or second vice chair. Stig, if you have any other thoughts?
Thank you for bringing that concern up, and I, I do, you know, want to reflect Kathleen's comment that this is merely a draft. Based on the plan of development as it sits in draft form, these are just the things that we've pulled out for the remainder of 2023 into Q1 of 2024, because we won't have any of that revenue coming in until potentially April 2024. So, per your comment, Mayor Protem, there is a, a consideration that these funds wouldn't be spent until much, much later. And then I also want to just highlight that it's really, it's a little bit more of a placeholder in the, even in the effect of if we were to host an event for, or a community outreach type of program, clean and safe could also come from just needing to power wash streets after we host something in a public avenue. So, it's, I hate to say that in a draft, there's a, you know, a little bit of a placeholder, but that is really what it, what it's meant for, and I think that the board would absolutely hear your comments and respect that, and while I can't speak for what they're willing to strike from the budget that they drafted, based on these comments, I definitely think that there's consideration to take that back and, and reevaluate.
I would just add to those comments that I think this is an attempt to show the community that we want to get started, and that we want to do something, and, and we respect the amount of dollars that are available for, through the ARPA funding, but I think that this, this is a strong commitment from this, from our group to show the community that we are doing something. Standing up a, an organization like this, there's not a lot of glitz to it, right? But I think that the, the commitment to the, of the board is to show the community that we are doing something. So, dollars, but very important to the group to show that we are active, and that we are starting to do something with the minimal funds that we do have, that we're asking for.
Councilmember Grove?
On the other hand, I personally don't have any problems with it. I think a clean city is very important. You have graffiti all over, and yes, the, the city can take care of it, it just looks like you don't care. And if you have, you know, garbage cans overflowing, and it's just, it doesn't help with attracting visitors or attracting people that want to come to downtown, so I'm on the opposite, so you've got one and one.
Councilmember Barr, do you want?
Yeah, I haven't waved in yet, so I, I, I'm going to go ahead and support it, but I do want to echo Mayor Protem's comments, and I don't think the cleanliness part of it is actually the thing that's under contention, it is the, the potential, because it is such a, a broad spectrum of what could go into that budget line item in the future, that the DDA do not, does not ultimately adopt a kind of securitization, you know, piece, component of its work, you know? I think it, actually, many of our members here spoke to how appropriate this funding is to come out of ARPA, because it is in support of small business. It is a sustainable way to support our small businesses, which is ultimately the goal, and that we do even have discussions later tonight on health, safety, and security of residents downtown included. So, I would hope that you would be willing to take those comments back to your board in the future, you know, for future meetings and consideration as well, but I will go ahead and, and vote in favor of it.
I'll just start off and say, yeah, I support this, I want to set the DDA up for success. I do kind of echo some of the sentiments that Mayor Protem with, with the budget, not specifically that item, but I know how expedited this process was, and how quickly you wanted to get this together, you know? I know getting something started is kind of, is kind of messy and not always well-defined, so I would like the budget to be a little, little, little clearer, a little better defined there, but, you know, it's a, a good starting point, so I will be supporting this resolution. Anything else, counsel? We do have a motion and a second. So, I'm going to try to open the vote here. So, vote four is approving the IGA.
The vote is six in favor, with Mayor Protem riding, voting no, the motion carries.
Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone. Item B, under general business, is ID 2355. It is an update from presiding Judge Loretta Huffine, and I believe we have Judge Huffine and, let me bring up my document here, Court Supervisor Dante Alzamora here to present, so, welcome.
We have a, whoops. Already forgot that. We have a couple slides to show you. Basically, we want to go through briefly the things that we're doing in the court. We are partnering with the City of Inglewood on a restorative justice program. We are using mediation where appropriate, we've had some really good success with that. Our juvenile court is a separate entity, so that juveniles are not mixed with the adults, and we're keeping that in place. We're going through all of our forms to make sure that they're inclusive and that they are in plain language, that's understandable by everyone. Outreach to defendants that are, who are unhoused continues. I do have a couple stories to tell you. We have a wonderful court probation officer, Maureen Riddell, who is also our court navigator, and her position is to help people navigate the process. As part of that, she goes to the Grace, Grateful Cafe regularly, usually on a Tuesday morning, and meets people, people who are there, who are unhoused, transient, and if they have court cases, she's been successful in getting them to come to court and take care of them. We had one woman that came in, and we were able to clear five warrants and take care of her cases, and she has not reoffended. There's a gentleman that is calling her weekly now, as she moves him through the process of finding community service and outreach from all health. So, we do feel that we have some success stories in that regard. We're updating all of our orders in our bench book to be compliant with all the new legislation from last year, and we're partnering right now with True Independence for Inclusion, and that's the group that is representing vision impaired folks that come through our city, and how they will navigate the court system. And so, we're very proud of those things that are happening. That's just a brief overview. Dante Almazora is our court supervisor, and he's going to tell you a little bit about our transparency and our innovations in the court processes.
Yes, I'm Dante Alzamora, the court supervisor. Go to the next slide, I'm sorry. So, our main, I would say our main focus is customer experience, and everything from a new system to any of the pro, processes we have changed, try to deal with customer experience, try to give the customer the best experiences possible. Before, I've only been here one year, but even when I was working as a court clerk in other districts like Golden, we've had 100 people waiting in line, takes two to three hours, sometimes we work past during lunch hours. We have, with the new system and the streamline of hybrid court, we have made that much smaller. We have maybe five, 10, 15 people waiting in line, and a lot of that is not even going through the courts, or going to see the judge. We would take care of them in the counter. Some of the process that we, the reason why we get so many, or so less people is because some of the processes that we have provided is with the prosecutor, with the new system as well, we could, they could see the docket that's coming up, and they could streamline them, offer them plea agreements, so instead of just being able to pay it in the mail or come in person or pay it in the mail, now they could go online, they could have the plea agreement in front of them beforehand, and it streamlines everything, and it also, it gives the customer a better experience. They, every time we have to deal with one, they, they're appreciated how either fa, fast it's, it went, how helpful we've been, and it gives them just an overall great experience. So, talking about the new system that we have, not only with the new laws that have changed legal precedent, like 48 hours, we have to see a defendant in 48 hours, so it does give us, it does make us work on Sundays kind of thing. We have to actually work remotely. With the new system, it does, lets us do that from home, so we could do a jail video from home, the judge has access to, to it, my court clerks will have ac, have access to it, and we could do it all from home without actually coming in. Again, we strive for the customer experience in that, even though they're in jail, it actually gives them more customer experience that they get released within that 48 hours, and they don't have to wait the whole weekend. We also have the, with the new system, we also went paperless, so that saves a lot of money in the supplies. We, some of the process we, we've gone through is the special legal services, so the public defender, we set court hearings twice a month, so we don't have to actually have somebody each time, or having that legal services in our budget or on our cost to have them more often. I believe before, the public defender was here four days a week, five days a week, pretty much all day, and that's definitely lowering our cost. A new process that we are doing going forward is taking a look into our interpreter services, and we are talking to police to try to get one, once a month, to try to get, even if it's a juvenile or adult, we're trying to get that set up as a one court hearing so we could have, so they don't have to come back on another court date. Again, that's with the customer experience, we don't want them to actually keep coming back and give them a bad experience. We have also partnered with Warren Tech. We have, and it just started last year, we, they reached out to us, they wanted to start an intern program. So, they have to have 100 hours, and it's the Warren Tech program that allows them to actually experience real work-related programs, and these are going to be more, more in the legal side. They want to learn about lawyers, they want to learn about administration, and I think it's been going great. Their, our first success story was last year in the fall, and that we have, and we only had one at that point, now we have two currently, but that is working out great.
Okay, I want to touch on a couple things Dante said. The fact that we have streamlined the procedures, eliminating long wait times and repeat court appearances, I do want to stress, does not mean that we're not looking for accountability. The end result will be the same, except that we're, we're trying to make it more convenient for people. As far as Dante mentioned, we are on call every day, but Saturday.
Yep.
If there is someone in custody, we have to have a hearing, and that could, that includes me, it includes our prosecutor, our public defender, at least two court staff. And thanks to being paperless, we can do it. We don't have to have a physical file that everybody looks at, nor do we have to have everyone drive to the courthouse on a Sunday. So, that's because of the change in law in January that I'm sure you're aware of.
And the second slide, sorry, the strategic plan and dashboard. We have worked with IT department, and this will be on the website eventually, we're still working through it. Again, with the new system, it gives us better data collection, so we could put, break it down with criminal cases, parking cases, traffic cases, and it shows how long it takes to close a case, how long, we're just trying to, we're trying to show transparency and how the court clerk, or the court process works. I think I missed one last thing.
It's okay, I'll jump in.
Yeah, sorry.
It's okay. A few weeks ago, I sent you a list of court accomplishments that is in more detail than what's on the slide, and if you have any questions about anything we're doing, we're happy to answer them. You're always welcome to come over and visit and see how we operate. It's a beautiful old courthouse, we enjoy being there, it's a good place to dispense justice, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for Judge Huffine?
Okay.
No, I have one, otherwise I'll, I can't leave you without getting a question. So, what's been, so you were appointed, what, going on?
October 3rd.
Yeah, six months, seven months, something like that. So, what's been the biggest challenge moving into the new role as presenting judge?
So, I'm very comfortable being a judge. In a courtroom, it's great. Navigating the city processes, the various levels of people, it's been a learning curve, but I think I'm getting there, right, Jim?
I would, I would second that, Judge.
So, we really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you tonight.
Great. And what do, where do you see any more improvement over the next year here?
We're continuing to work on inclusivity, we're continuing to work on accountability. You may or may not know that we are by law limited to PR bonds on certain low-level offenses. You may or may not know that we are by law limited to PR bonds on certain low-level offenses, and we can't keep-
And for those that don't know what PR bond is, a-
Personal recognizance. You're released on your signature with a promise to appear. We weren't having a very good track record with people showing up on those. So basically, I've adopted a position now that I do honor that law, but after a few failures to appear, that law doesn't apply. And then a cash or surety bond is appropriate. And that way, we're able to compel that person's attendance, and pursuant to the new legislation, we will be seeing that person within 48 hours. So they're not languishing in jail on a minor charge, but they are seen. And so going forward, I do think that we are, we're cleaning up a lot of old warrants, actually.
Yes, and that's the thing I did forget to mention, is that we are, previously, they were not even doing warrant audits. We had, we started doing that twice a year to make sure that we don't arrest anybody or, even a protection order, we were only doing it once, now we're doing it twice a year to make sure nobody gets arrested. Like I said, giving the best customer experience with the city of Littleton.
And limiting liability for any mistakes.
Yes.
For sure.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from counsel? All right, well, thank you so much. We'll move on to item C, which is still you here. Resolution 26-2023, resolution confirming the reappointment of Judge Benjamin Courier and Judge Christopher Cross as municipal court associate judges for a two-year term. So I'm going to turn it over to you.
Sure. Judge Courier has been with us since 2013. He was, is a private attorney here in Littleton. He was past president of the Arapahoe County Bar Association and recipient of the Outstanding Young Lawyers Award in Colorado, both in Colorado and Arapahoe County. And as I say, he's been appointed and reappointed every two years since 2013. He does an excellent job, he's very personable and he's very bright. Judge Cross was a district court judge in Arapahoe County. He retired in 2016 and came on as a associate judge in Littleton in 2018, and he has been reappointed since then. He was, prior to being a judge, the chief deputy district attorney in Denver, and he acts now as a special master for state and federal courts. Judge Cross is our mediation judge, that's his specialty. And so when we're able to do cases that can be resolved, especially family issues, family, somebody ends up in court or perhaps two people from a household, mediation is a really good way to resolve that, and he's our go-to guy on that. So I'm asking that they be reappointed for another two-year term. Finance did a salary study, and they looked at judicial salaries around the state, we're not asking for any increase. They're adequately, and we are adequately compensated right now, thank you.
Any questions? Counselor Barr.
Yeah, Judge Hufine, just wanted to say thank you again for your previous, thank you both for your previous presentation. I'm so happy to see all the work that you've been doing. With regards specifically to the reappointment of these judges, obviously, your recommendation carries a lot of weight, carries a lot of water in our decision-making, since we do not have a performance review in front of us to make those reappointments. Do you have internal processes yourself by which you grade, rank, and show performance needs or where improvements may need to be made with judges prior to recommending them for reappointment?
To be honest with you, because of the short time I've been in this position, no, we have not developed that yet. What I, what I do is I do have meetings with them, they go to the judicial conferences, get reports from court staff after they've handled a docket. We've not been able to give them much time because I haven't taken any time off, but there might be a vacation someday, I don't know, we'll see. But I have all the confidence in the world with them, in them, in terms of my interaction with them, discussing the new laws, the new legal issues, our procedures, et cetera.
I would add this, I would say, from the city attorney's office, our prosecutor being in front of these judges all the time, if for some reason we were having perhaps bad customer service experiences in front of the judge, because we're using customer service now, I can promise you, given that we're attorneys, we have no issue with letting Judge Hufine know that, you know, perhaps they're respecting their role, their separate role, but if there were certain opportunities for improvement, we share those with the judge as they come up, but so far, so good.
And I do know that Judge Feldman told me that before each of them were actually hired as associate judges under his watch, that he vetted them thoroughly through, in terms of Judge Cross, through the Judicial Performance Commission, and in terms of Judge Courier, he knew him personally, he's had him here in court in front of him as an attorney and knew the quality of his legal ability.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Mayor Protem?
Just on the vetting front, do we, just like a Google search?
I'm sorry?
Do we do like a Google search just to see what has those, the judges have publicly said? Is that part of the vetting process?
I had never, I have not done that.
Like an HR or anything like that? Is that a standard practice?
In terms of like background check?
Yeah, what have they, background, no, more, more, what are they, what is, what have they said maybe in media or things like that, if anything?
Yeah, I would say the whole kind of media search that you may see currently with some of your city manager nominees and folks like that, that's probably a little bit newer than what we've done for associate judges at least.
And I would just comment that if these were new appointees, I believe, you know, we would, there would be more of that, just to kind of cover some basic basis for the city, but you know, as, as these associate judges have been with us and have, you know, had, had, you know, high marks for performance and, you know, it is Judge Hufine's recommendation that we look for, we have not done that for these, you know, contractors.
And I would add to that, that judges and attorneys operate under a code of ethics, and there are things in there about what a judge can or cannot do in public, what they can and cannot comment on, particularly in any partisan political thing. So that eliminates that right away. And if, if there were issues, I'm sure we would have heard about it by now, but Judge Courier is quite an upstanding citizen of Littleton, as is Judge Cross.
Yeah, I have no concerns about these judges, this is more of a broader question, and I'm glad, moving forward in the future, that that will be part of a best practice to include that.
Right.
That's what I heard, right?
Yeah, for new-
For new-
Appointees.
Great.
Yes, I was going to echo that, since it's not pertinent to these reappointments, but for next time, you know, do explain the vetting process, how you identify the judge that you would like to appoint, so, but again, not, not for right now, but maybe next time.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Okay, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 26-2023 confirming the reappointment of Judge Benjamin Courier and Judge Christopher Cross as municipal court associate judges for a two-year term.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, sorry, Steve, he was trying to make the motion, you jumped the gun there. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No.
No further discussion, all right, open the voting.
The vote is seven in favor, the motion carries unanimously.
All right.
Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
All right, just after eight o'clock, before we move on to the next item, does anyone need, do we need to pause for a bathroom break? All right, we'll have a five-minute recess, we'll be back at 8:10.
We're back. It is eight oh nine. All right, the next item for general business is D is Resolution 29 of 2023. It's a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between the City of Littleton, City of Inglewood for provision of mutual aid between Littleton Police Dispatch and Inglewood Police Dispatch.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Protem.
I need to recuse myself. Um, this is my employer, so if that's okay with everybody, I'll just kinda scurry it out and then you can bring me back when it's done.
Yep, will do.
And just, just for the record, this would include this item as well as, uh...
This item and the next item.
The next item.
Yes.
So I have a question on that. Would it make more sense to talk about the next item first?
Yes, well, I think if you can...
We can do both in one?
You could talk both and...
All these rules of procedure, I'm all... I'm a flustered...
We approve the agenda as presented, so... All right, so we have, um, I'm just gonna turn it over to the city manager to present these.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll just, I was gonna just to say, I, uh, uh, Items D and E tonight are both about the Mobile Response Unit Services that we're partnering with, partnering with the City of Inglewood and All Health Four, and so, um...
I'm gonna cut you off right there. I'm just gonna read the other resolutions just since we're gonna kinda talk about them both together. Um, so Resolution 32 is approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Littleton and All Health Network regarding the mobile response. And so it's two resolutions that are tied together.
So we'll ask council to, uh, to consider the resolutions separately under Items D and E, but I will ask Chief Stevens to just speak to the MRU program and both of these needs as it'll make, I think, the most comprehensive picture for council as a presentation. So with that, Chief.
Good evening, Council. Doug Stevens, Chief of Police. Uh, thanks for having me here to talk about the LPD and EPD IGA and MOU for the MRU. Any questions?
How long were you working on that statement right there?
It just popped into my head, and I think I got all those acronyms right. I'm not sure, but, uh, so the Mobile Response Unit is an expansion of our partnership with All Health Network, kind of complements our co-responder program, which you're all familiar with, where we have a licensed, uh, mental health professional ride around with our police officers and respond to calls for service with a mental health component to them. Uh, the MRU has been operating in Inglewood, um, for about the last year, uh, part of a pilot program there in Inglewood. What the MRU is, is it's a, uh, it's a van that, uh, is staffed by, uh, All Health, uh, clinician, a mental, mental health clinician, as well as a medical professional, and, and they respond independently to low-level, uh, calls for service that may have a mental health, uh, component to them. Um, whereas those calls previously would have been, uh, the initial response would have fallen to the police department, most likely. Um, so mobile, uh, the Mobile Response Unit takes that, uh, away from the police department and for those low-level calls, and it frees up our officers to, to do more traditional police response. Um, so we have the two resolutions here. One is, uh, the approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Littleton and All Health Network, which outlines the, uh, responsibilities of each side on how the MRU will operate within Littleton, what their expectations are of us, what our expectations are of them. And then the IGA with, uh, Inglewood Dispatch between Littleton PD Dispatch and Littleton Dis- or Inglewood Dispatch and Littleton Dispatch on how we will dispatch that unit between the two cities. And what that one addresses is basically that because the MRU primarily operates in Inglewood, uh, that's their primary radio channel. Uh, but when we have a call for service in Littleton where we can call for the MRU or MRU to respond, um, that IGA outlines how those two dispatch centers will coordinate that to keep the staff at the MRU safe and to let both cities know where the unit is so that, uh, should they need assistance from either police department, we're able to get to them sooner. Uh, the MRU, uh, we believe is, uh, is the next step for us in providing additional services to, uh, folks experiencing mental health crises. Uh, it's, I believe it's gonna be a win-win as it has demonstrated that it's been in Inglewood where, um, like I said, uh, these calls for service would have traditionally been handled by law enforcement, and then we would have been able to do either a co-responder response, hopefully, if we had the co-responder working, or a follow-up response at a later time through All Health Network. Uh, the MRU will free up our units to, to do other things while they are able to handle that, that need and provide immediate resources. Uh, I think that pretty much covers the summary of what the two documents are about. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions, Council? Councilmember Grove?
Um, with the expanded geographic region, will they have the capacity to do this?
That's, um, we're operating off at their request. I mean, we always, always thought the MRU was very attractive when they started their operations in Inglewood, and that we were concerned about capacity, as were they. And after operating in Inglewood for a year, they came to us and said, okay, we're ready to expand, and that has resulted in this.
So does that mean it's an additional unit or just...
I think they're running one unit right now. It's grant-funded, uh, on my understanding, uh, the personnel and the vehicle. And, uh, so I think that they have not looked to expand just yet. I anticipate, although I haven't had conversations with them, that this may be the first step toward an expansion, and you may see something like that in the future.
And, um, just to better understand how this works, how does the dispatcher... Do they ask questions so they know whether they should send the, the mobile unit or a police officer?
Yes, there'll be a training component, uh, that will, our staff will have to go through, especially in dispatch, to, to triage those types of calls. And of course, I think what we will see, uh, I anticipate what we'll see is, uh, in the beginning, as we have, uh, those initial, uh, responses from the MRU, we'll probably see more police personnel also maybe go into some of those until we get comfortable with how the whole thing operates or our dispatchers become more familiar and comfortable with, uh, triaging those types of calls. And then, uh, the MRU becomes more comfortable in Littleton as well. And then I think we'll see our responses to those reduce as the MRU response increases.
Councilmember Driscoll. Councilmember Valdez.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, a unit, how, how big is a unit?
Well, it depends on, uh, like what, I'm not sure what you're asking, like the...
You said there's one unit.
Yeah, the, uh, Mobile Response Unit is, it's one van staffed with two individuals.
So, uh, so, uh, was it All Health has two individuals?
Yes.
Always, is that 24/7 then?
No, I, I think that they're approximately 40 hours a week. I think that van is operating approximately 40 hours a week. I'd have to double-check with Inglewood PD.
And is it like during the witching hour when you expect to have that, those kind of issues in?
I think it varies.
So, and then, so they, are they accompanied by an officer?
No, that's the difference between the MRU and the co-responder. So the co-responder is, uh, a clinician that's with the police department, and, uh, um, the MRU is, uh, the next step, the next evolution, I believe, where they can triage those lower-level ones that don't necessarily have a safety component to them, at least based on the face of the call, the initial information, and they will respond independently without the police department.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
Councilmember Millman.
I have, I might have a silly question. This, uh, Mobile Response Unit would be, I know it's gonna share between Littleton and Inglewood, would it actually respond all the way out in Trailmark too as well? Was there some sort of...
There's no geographic boundary that I've been made aware of, and there's none delineated in the, uh, MOU.
Okay.
So Littleton's Littleton, and, uh, I would assume that if we had a call out there and they were available, we'd send them there.
Thank you.
You bet.
I have, uh, I'm gonna ask a question before I go back to you. Or, no, you haven't asked yet, have you? Oh, okay, Councilmember Bar, go ahead, sorry.
Thank you, I appreciate it, Mayor. Um, so, one of the things, I, I'm really excited about the expansion of this program, and, um, I really want to use this period of time that we have this performance going, especially considering it's tied to a grant, to measure the efficacy of it. Um, and do you have metrics within the grant kind of performance or the grant stipulations where you're already measuring metrics of success? And could you maybe describe those or what those might be?
Yes and no. So, yes, I know there are metrics. They're managed, uh, all this, the MRU operations are entirely managed by All Health Network. So I have no information on the grant. I'm fairly certain that they do have that. I do know that on our co-responder program, the existing program that we partner with All Health in, we do capture metrics on number of calls for service, number of follow-up calls, those types of things. Uh, I assume that would be the same type of data tracking here.
Okay, well, if, if that is not the case, I might ask, uh, the city manager and staff to, you know, at least potentially provide us with some of those reportings, at least on the grant performance of what Inglewood is already going through, so we can also see how the program is actually evolving and, and being successful out in the field.
I'm fairly certain they have that data, and I'll get that.
That would be great.
You bet.
Um, secondly, as well, during the course of the implementation, um, I think these programs have shown to be so effective for a lot of municipalities across the country. And oftentimes, the key to making them sustainable and non-grant-funded, but so, funded via the revenue of our city, is to make the case to the citizens as to why this is a more effective and more cost-effective method of dealing with some of these situations. Um, does the city, do we have plans to essentially kind of, uh, look at what the cost ramifications would be if the grant period were to end and we would want to continue sustaining these operations?
Yes, uh, I have, as part of the 24 budget preparation, I'll be providing information on what this may look like absent a grant, you know? And, uh, um, you know, the efficacy, like you're talking about, is something we'll need to measure. Um, it's nice that Inglewood has been test-driving this, for lack of a better term, for a year, you know, so we can call on their data and their successes to see how that would look like. Uh, but I will have more solid information, um, as we move into the 24 budget on what these types of services, should we decide to stay with them, would look like absent a grant.
Okay, thank you very much.
You bet.
I'll just add that this is a really well-timed and exciting, uh, pilot opportunity to gain some experience and some, uh, some results factors as we do look at proposing to use some, some similar behavioral health partnership, um, programming with future years' budgets.
Uh, yeah, I'll just say this, I mean, it sounds like a great, uh, opportunity here for Littleton, a great program moving forward. You kind of alluded to it before when you were answering Councilmember Grove's question. Who makes the, uh, decision to send the MRU or the police? Is it dispatch? Is that who is the one that decides?
Yeah, so, and we would not get a call for service, whether it's on the 91 line or the non-emergency line, as we do now.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it would fit certain criteria that we will train, uh, based on what Inglewood has been doing in the past and what the MRU expects and All Health expects. Once our staff are trained up on what those criteria are, um, the dispatch will then make a determination on, that sounds like that's a call for the MRU.
Good.
Uh, the same time, we're gonna train our supervisors to, to have some sort of oversight there too, where they could always step in and say, hey, why don't we send an officer on that as well, just to be safe? Uh, and then also, uh, at the very least, the MRU staff on their own have the independent decision-making capability to say, hey, I know you're sending us on this, would you mind sending an officer? And we're certainly willing and able to do that as well.
Okay, and, and at least in Inglewood, how it's operating now, um, is their PD notified when the MRU goes out? Even if they're not told to go with them, but they say, hey, we know it's, it's out there?
Yes, I believe that's part of the IGA that we have between the two dispatch centers is they'll know that the MRU is in Littleton and, and, uh, when they're back and forth between the two jurisdictions.
Great, thanks.
Yes.
Any other questions for staff? Nope, all right. We've got, uh, two resolutions. We'll entertain them separately. There's a motion. Councilmember Valdez.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. All right. I move to approve Resolution 29 dash 2023, approving to intergovernmental agreement between City of Littleton, City of Inglewood for the provision of mutual aid between Littleton Police Dispatch and Inglewood Police Dispatch.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, uh, to approve Resolution 29. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll open the voting.
The vote is six in favor, the motion carries.
Thank you, all right. Is there a motion for Resolution 32?
Move to approve Resolution 32 dash 2023, approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Littleton and All Health Network regarding the Mobile Response Unit.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Councilmember Valdez. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll open the voting.
The vote is six in favor, the motion carries.
Great, thank you so much. All right, so, before I move on to Item F, Ordinance Nine, could someone retrieve Mayor Protem Ryden?
She's at, she's at the Starbucks up at Woodland.
Hey, we got Mike tonight, all right?
All right.
So you're, you're back from Mike to Mike now, right? With the new mic? The new mic? Yeah, yeah, so your mic really good.
All right, now Mayor Protem is out of the penalty box, and we are playing at full strength again here. Um, so, Item F, uh, this is a, kind of a unique, uh, item here. This would normally be an ordinance on first reading on consent. Um, but at the last study session, uh, we were missing Councilmember Grove, and we didn't have clear direction of exactly what we were wanting to move forward here. And this is regard to, uh, land use appeals process. And so what we determined was to, uh, direct staff to, um, draft two ordinances, kind of the two main ideas that we were thinking. And, um, as this is, uh, would, would be an ordinance on first reading tonight, it's kind of, we're, we're picking, uh, one of them, um, that direction to move forward, uh, to further refine for a second reading and public hearing. Um, I would assume it would be set in two weeks. And so what we're gonna have is have, uh, staff do a presentation on kind of the differences between these two ordinances, how they relate to the land use, uh, appeals process. And then we can, uh, ask questions and kind of figure out which one council wants to, uh, make a motion on and potentially advance depending on the outcome of a vote. Um, and, uh, so, yeah, I'm gonna turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, with your, uh, comprehensive introduction of the item, um, I won't, I won't reiterate what you said. Um, tonight, we are here with the two ordinances. Um, and from a staff standpoint, I'll just point out that, um, at your last, at your, your March 14th study session, you heard quite a bit of background on the, the current appeals process and then the input, um, that council had asked for from the, uh, Planning Commission and also the Historic Preservation Board. Um, so tonight, I, you know, really the, the focus is on the two options, and since it's, there are two ordinances, our, uh, our, our expert city attorney had a strong hand in crafting the ordinances. Um, and so I, I think tonight, our planning staff will serve as resources for questions, but, um, the city attorney and I talked about his giving kind of the staff, uh, presentation, summarizing the, the ordinances and options, and then, uh, helping to, to facilitate council's, um, uh, consideration of your preference. So with that, turn it over to city attorney.
Thank you, city manager.
Good evening, council, mayor. Um, so we are here tonight to discuss these two ordinances, and I have Michael Sutherland with me, who is going to be driving. I'm gonna be like the tour guide who has never been to the place where we're driving, but I'll be pointing out sites along the way that I have no idea. And Jennifer Henninger is with us tonight as well, our community development director. Um, so what's before you tonight are two different ordinances. And as you'll recall, um, as the city manager alluded to, on March 14th, we came to city council with five different options. And it was at that time, um, and the mayor is correct, that we were kind of a little bit split in terms of which of those options sounded the best to city council. But we were able to narrow it down to two, uh, two ordinances, two options. Of which I will tell you, I have amended the staff communication because I had the ordinances flipped as well as the PowerPoint, as I think I had perhaps those in the correct area, but it didn't mesh with the staff communication. So, uh, my apologize, my apologies to you all. So with that, we have two ordinances for your consideration. Ordinance A is basically that all land use appeals would go to the courts. That's similar to what we already have within our, um, within our code. We had mentioned before at previous study sessions that we have a section within our code 2 dash 2 dash 5, which says all quasi-judicial decisions are final, and the remedy is to go to the city court. Kind of, um, I'm probably getting ahead of our, our driver here on this one. Um, but one of the challenges with that is we have some inconsistencies, which we all talked about, between our code, between Title 10, which, uh, led to us coming to city council to get direction. So that is the current state of our code. We have Title II, um, which says that all quasi-judicial decisions were final, and it had the question of any aggrieved party could go to the court. But we also had Title 10, which is in, currently it's, uh... Well, 10 dash 9, uh, dash 3 dash 7. Um, we have another section within our code which says basically that certain appeals can go to certain bodies. So one of the things that prompted this was an appeal that a citizen made on a particular application, which went to city council. And it was a planning decisions, or Planning Commission's decision, which went to city council. And the challenge with that is, you know, we have this conflict. Title II said it goes to the courts, Title, Title 10 dash 9 said it goes to, um, city council. Another one of the challenges with that is there was really no criteria for how city council was to review this. Was it a new public hearing? That would represent due process concerns for the applicant who was successful. So there were, there were a list of, um, inconsistencies between our current ordinances that are on the books, if you could go back one. So, um, that one, yeah. So we brought forward two ordinances. One says it's consistent with 2 dash 2 dash 5, which says that all land use appeals are final. They go to the courts. But there was one carve-out, and that carve-out was for HPB. Um, HPB, when we met with them in a study session, uh, basically thought it was important for city council to main, to maintain some level of local control over that decision. And so they wanted a carve-out in terms of, um, for two different types of certificates that HPB, um, generally rules on. One is a certificate of appropriateness, and the other one is a certificate of demolition. But for that, any other quasi-board that was making a final decision, that's all gonna go to the courts. So that's Ordinance A for your consideration. Ordinance B is the one that Planning Commission recommended, and it's a little different. Um, basically, uh, Planning Commission's decision was that all land use applicants have a right to appeal to city council. Now, that's different from what our city code currently reads as. Um, currently, any aggrieved party, um, could appeal a Planning Commission decision to city council. This, um, and our Planning Commission really thought long and hard about this was that, and it was their opinion, that applicants are the ones that are investing the most time, most money. Generally speaking, they're probably a property owner or someone who has a, um, uh, some sort of vested interest in, in, in the project. They potentially, depending on the size of the project, if it's a large developer, probably spent hundreds of thousands of dollars. But it's also important to consider that most of these applications that a lot of our boards are seeing are not the huge developers that come in. They're someone who wants a variance, someone who wants to move their, their deck a little further into the setback, someone who wants to build a fence a little further into the setback. There's a variety of different things in which we have, we'll call them ordinary property owners seeking to avail themselves. And so Planning Commission thought long and hard, and they said, okay. So all land use appeals should go to city council. Um, if it's, if, uh, if an applicant was denied, that that's where it goes. So those are the two, in the most broadest sense, um, those are the two ordinances in front of you. Am I missing anything in here?
I have a burning question to make sure I understand this. Um, going back one. Does that mean number B would include HPB decisions for COAs and requests?
Correct. The one thing that Ordinance B would do that would kind of expand a little bit of the role is currently in our existing code, we talk about all city council decisions are final. We also talk about all board of adjustment, um, decisions are final, and those go to the court. But the, what the expansion of Ordinance B would do is perhaps if someone came in with a variance request, it was denied, that the applicant could file that appeal with city council. Whereas currently, right now, they cannot. It goes to the courts.
And then if they don't like the city council decision, then they can go to the courts?
Then they can go to the courts, as well as an aggrieved party. And we can let the courts figure out who's an aggrieved party and who's not, and not have that decision right now resting with city council and trying to make those sorts of legal determinations. So we have kind of some more specifics in regards to what the ordinances say. Not driving here. Uh, look, kids, Big Ben.
Whoever's driving is going crazy.
Okay, so, current overview, I talked about some of the inconsistencies with our current appeals process. Um, we did have a number of study sessions and hearings. We had, uh, this would be, well, we've had two and a half, two study sessions with city council. We had one study session with HPB. We had one study session with Planning Commission. We had a regular meeting with Planning Commission where they made this recommendation, and we have tonight. So this is the sixth time that we've been meeting on these various issues, and Michael has those up, uh, on the board there, just for your edification. So I don't know if there's any specific questions as to what council's being asked of tonight. of tonight. If there's any specific questions about an ordinance, we're happy to answer them.
So council, does anyone have any, let's start off first with any process questions of what we're doing tonight. The process, now everyone, good? Okay. Any questions for staff on the ordinances?
I actually have a process question.
Oh, we're going back to process question. Mayor Protam.
Yeah, I just wanna be clear, so with that first option, or pardon me, the second option, second alternative, if it passes, then we as a city council will need to treat any and all applications to Planning Commission as quasi judicial, right? In the event that the applicant does appeal.
Not all of Planning Commission's decisions are necessarily quasi judicial. It would be for specific types of things in which they would, where our city code says that they're the final decision maker. So, for example, not to complicate things, we have, we currently have rezonings. So rezoning is not a final decision by Planning Commission, it's basically a recommendation that's still gonna go to city council for your final determination. So to answer your question, I wouldn't say that everything necessarily would come to, would come to city council on appeal, but a majority of what Planning Commission would be doing would be subject to an appeal by an applicant to you under ordinance B.
Did that answer your question?
Jennifer is going to...
And Mayor Protam, if you look on the screen, it actually lists the specific Planning Commission applications that would fall under an appeal category. So those would be the specific types of cases that, yes, we would have to treat as quasi judicial.
Well, and I think the Mayor Protam is, is that from when it's an application to planning, or because it would be a new hearing, it wouldn't be quasi for council until there was an appeal, since it's a brand new hearing?
Currently, the way that we've set it up within the appeals process is it's all gonna be a new hearing. So you're gonna have new evidence, new testimony that you're gonna rely upon if it comes to you.
So originally, the original application to planning, it's not quasi judicial for all of us, because it may not be appealed. The second's appealed, it's a new hearing, and so that's the moment that it would become quasi for us.
That is correct. That's a great question.
Makes sense to you?
And Mayor...
It does make sense, and I'm still concerned, though, because how am I supposed to be unbiased if they've already gone through a public process, and it's very likely that I could hear about that, or will hear about that, from our residents, our citizens?
I don't know if you're, you're looking for a response from me. It's a, no, it's, it's a fair question. I mean, I will tell you that as, as councilpersons, you all talk with a lot of your constituents over things that you hope you'll never see again, but they don't, they don't know that. You know, when you tell them, hey, this is quasi judicial, I can't talk to you about it, they're gonna say, well, heck, I voted for you, of course you're gonna talk to me about it, and I don't want X going at Y. And so I know the challenges that it puts under city council. With this, with the ability for this to be a new hearing, it's helpful in the sense is that you're basing your information upon what the presentation is gonna be that night, not necessarily what you may have learned prior. The issue that it could be for a city councilperson, however, is that making sure, ensuring that you haven't prejudged any matter that's gonna come before you. And so from an outside perspective, if I'm an applicant, and I know that a particular city councilperson has had meetings, and has already been on the record and voiced to whoever it is, that, golly gosh, I don't like this project and hope it fails, that could be grounds for recusal. It depends on how you, as a councilperson, could set aside, you know, types of things that you may have heard about, how you would disclose that to, hey, yeah, you know, I've ran into people at, you know, my District Three meeting, or I ran into people, you know, at King Supers, we've talked about it, I haven't really formed an opinion on it, but yes, I am aware of it, but I haven't prejudged that matter. So that's probably how you would have to go about, as a councilperson, dealing with those types of issues, but you're somewhat insulated in the fact that it's a new hearing. It's just how you go about disclosing information that you may have learned upon, and how you go about disclosing that that information that you've heard isn't gonna affect your ability to be fair and impartial, and base your evidence, or base your finding on the evidence presented at a hearing.
I would assume that comments at Planning Commission meeting and all the evidence put in there, the actual outcome of the meeting would be presented at the appeal, to say, hey, look at, planning denied it seven to zero, you know, we would know that, so I think that's all kind of common knowledge, so it's not...
Yeah, just so I'm, I think what I hear you're saying, city attorney, is that if I was then biased because of what I'd been told or heard, and I felt like that would impede my ability to be, make a fair ruling as a judge, then I could recuse myself. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that's appropriate?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Grove, did you have a question?
I have a non-process question.
Okay. What, no, I think that kind of blended the line of going into the questions about the ordinances.
Just because I'm not knowledgeable about this, if somebody was to appeal to the court, what kind of cost commitment and time commitment? Cost commitment first, time commitment, in other words, could the project be, is there a way the project could move along in some way while the court gets dragged out in court? So it's too late? Allah, the Grove, or Vita, whatever it's called?
So there, there's certain time constraints upon when a person would have to file an appeal, so we've kind of reduced that to fifteen days in which someone were to, to file an appeal. There's state law which allows a certain timeline. To answer your question, there are abilities to stop a development from going in place that would be filing either injunctions, which are very expensive, and the likelihood of anyone having the wherewithal, financial wherewithal to actually stop a project by posting that bond to, is unlikely. In terms of the cost, the cost for filing in district court is actually relatively cheap. It's cheaper than what we currently have as an appeal under our current code, which is, which is $500. In terms of the time and cost commitment, I mean, that's, that, that kind of depends on what the, on what the briefing schedule is, how sophisticated the person is that's appealing it. It's not cheap. I mean, if you were to hire a land use attorney to file this appeal for you, it's going to be thousands of dollars. If you're, whoever the applicant is, or whoever the aggrieved party is, it's likely to be, if they're having professional assistance with it, thousands of dollars.
Thank you.
Councilmember Milliman.
I have a question about the courts, too, as well. How knowledgeable are these, I don't even know which courts they appeal to, but how knowledgeable are these courts with regards to our codes, our land use? If, if an appeal goes to one of the courts?
Yeah, generally speaking, a court is not gonna be taking a look at our code, per se. So, for example, if this is an application that was denied, which was appealed to the courts, generally speaking, they're gonna be operating under what's called a Rule 106 action. And a Rule 106 action, all the court is looking at is whether there was enough confident record, excuse me, confident evidence on the record to have supported the decision that was made, that there's not an abuse of discretion that was done, i.e., you know, for example, or I guess I should say, e.g., you know, essentially, we used a, you know, we used a wrong or improper code. We used wrong criteria. We used criteria that didn't exist in terms of forming the basis for our votes. Those are things that they could look at and compare to our code and say, what does your code say? And like, wow, there's nothing on the record that actually supports what city council or Planning Commission or whichever board did that. That's basically what they would be looking at. I will tell you that in district court, whether it's Arapahoe, Jeffco, Douglas, depends on where the property, where they, where that decision is occurring, are very sophisticated in 106 actions, so they know exactly what they should be looking for. But I don't think that has any bearing on whether or not they're familiar necessarily with our code or the city of Littleton, because they do it for every jurisdiction.
Councilmember Valdez.
So an applicant could appeal even because of conditions that were added by Planning Commission.
Correct.
Right, so if it didn't go to, if it has time to go to city council, that gives staff an opportunity to review it, to see if it was a reasonable decision that, on their opinion. So by the time it comes to council, we would have more information as to whether or not the condition was justified or not, versus going to the court where a judge makes the decision based on other reasons than what the city would be making it on.
That would be a proper assumption, correct?
So it would be, I, I think in my opinion, it'd be good to have it go to council first, kind of vet it almost, to say, yeah, that's, that's really a little bit unreasonable. And that, it can be stopped right there, or approved right there at that point, correct?
Yeah, I would say hopefully, when we were at the, whoever the decision-making body was, and there was a condition that legal or staff was really concerned about, like, wow, we can't enforce that, or that is really unlawful, that we would jump in and, and say something before a condition was added.
And Planning Commission, it is unusual for them to have conditions with approval, approval with a particular condition. I mean, that's not an unusual thing.
No, and it's not unusual for an applicant to come in, and in the staff report, staff has already recommended, you know, a number of different conditions of approval to Planning Commission, but to your point, Councilmember Valdez, it certainly occurs where a, a condition is added from the dais of whoever the board is. Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilmember Barr.
Yes, one of the greatest costs to developers or applicants in these processes tends to be time. And so I'm gonna ask a couple of questions with regards to that time. So if a, a decision by, for example, Planning Commission were appealed, and then seen in district court, what is the, could you give me even a range of the amount of time that would pass between that appeal and then ultimately a hearing from a district court?
We've had a few 106 actions that have been filed recently against various councils. I would say generally, the timeframe is up to six months.
Okay.
Probably four or five months is probably average, it just depends on the court's docket and the level of sophistication of the argument and where.
As a follow-on question, how long would it take essentially for staff to then re-prepare a new hearing if, in the event that it were appealed to council?
You know, I would say, and I won't speak for staff, per se, on this, and they can jump in, you know, I would say largely, staff is, you know, probably, well, you know what, I'm not gonna say anything, Michael Sutherland.
Time is eight forty-eight on April four, twenty twenty-three.
Don't you please repeat the question?
No, I, I wanted to know about how much time would it take for staff to essentially receive an applicant's appeal, and then re-present, repackage and present it to staff for us to essentially create a new hearing? Does that process tend to take a month, weeks, days?
Yes, so there's that initial fifteen day appeal period, so let's count that in. I would say about forty-five days to a hearing.
Okay.
Councilmember Grove. Sure, depend on what it is.
Well, I, my comment is to follow up on what Jerry was saying, that it seems to me it would be benefit the applicant to come to council and not have to incur the extra cost to go to court directly. They always could do that, if they don't like what council says. I also, like what you said in terms of, we know the code probably better than a court, and I also like the responsibility kind of landing with electeds as opposed to appointeds.
Any other questions? I had a couple of questions, I have comments, but I'm gonna pose them as questions. So the difference between, the, the conflict in the code is between Title II and Title X with the appeals process, correct?
Correct.
And so would the, the more recent legislative action of Title X had council be the body? Is that correct?
I'm sorry.
So the most recent legislation that council took was to enact Title X?
Yes.
Which was, you know, the land use code. And that was, in that process, that's where city council was brought into the appeal process, whereas the older Title II, it was all to court, correct?
Correct.
So the more recent legislation brought council into the appeal process?
For the most part, correct.
Okay, okay. And then with the difference between the two, I know when we discussed this, I think it was our first study session, we kind of talked about having consistency amongst, within the city. I know when, with, A, nine A, having that carve out, would it be accurate to say it's more consistent to have all land use come for council, rather than just have a carve out for just H P B? Because it's all, it's all land use actions, right? Not just very, I mean...
That is correct.
That goes to ordinance B.
In ordinance B, right? Yeah, okay. And has, is, this is probably more for staff, had there been any of those, we'll call them small, ordinary applicants, you know, that's, wanna do something, you know, just get a variance on a deck or a fence that's been denied, that would have to go to court? Have they, has anyone actually appealed and gone to court, or has they asked if they could appeal to council? Is there, I mean, I'm thinking more on that small scale, on the likelihood of someone being willing to appeal to council versus go to court?
So we did have a case recently where a citizen came to the board of adjustment and, and requested a variance for a garage, they were denied. Their only opportunity at that point was to go through the court system. I don't know if this would have, if they would have been swayed, there, you know, if it's a split vote, that it might be more, there might be more impetus for a, for an applicant to say, well, I wanna bring it to elected officials and get a, get an answer on this. That was a unanimous vote, so, a little tough to say, Mayor.
Right, I mean, that's, I was just thinking about, because when we had the study session two weeks ago, you know, I was thinking more of going to court, but it was that idea of, hey, there could be someone that really wouldn't have the wherewithal or desire to go to court to appeal a denial, but maybe coming before council might make sense for them. So that's kind of what I was thinking there. So, Councilmember Valdez?
No, regarding what you talked about with the garage, it was, it was seven, or five-zero, whatever, it was unanimous, whatever.
Yeah, five-zero.
The, you know, and if they were to appeal that and come to council, and they had a five-zero, then we would agree, let's say we agreed with the appeal committee in that situation, they could still go to a judge. And then a judge would, I, I presume, you know, this is to city attorney, that the judge does look to see what's criteria of the board, the appeal board, and then the criteria of the council. Why was it denied? Did we base it on fact?
Yeah, and I would say, you know, speaking specifically to variances, the criteria is pretty, pretty black and white in a lot of respects, and so that's probably one of the reasons that we don't see a lot of appeals already occurring. I mean, it's pretty hard to get past an argument that, you know, you haven't caused this problem, or you don't have any special circumstances or conditions with your problem. I mean, very specific criteria to get passed, and so that's probably why we haven't seen a lot. I've seen it, you know, I've probably done B O A for a dozen years, I've seen probably one appeal that ever happened that went to the court, so it's pretty rare.
Any other questions? I have one more. Do you, off the top of your head, have a rough estimate of how many denials, let's say, an ordinance B, that would be covered by this in the last, we'll go, year? I'm just trying to think of how common this potentially could be if there were seventy-five denials, if there were five denials, that...
Ballpark, I would say in the past year, we may have had, I would say, less than ten denials. Yeah, I know, you gotta have a frame reference there.
A lot of math, of a lot, a larger number than ten.
Yeah. And I, and I always think of, we have administrative decisions that are, that are done as well.
I'm just trying to think of the ones that would be covered in ordinance B, yeah.
Right, right. Oh, gosh, so Planning Commission meetings, board of adjustment, and H P B, you're probably talking about twenty-five decisions, maybe.
Councilmember Grove, you have another question?
No.
Slash comment, okay.
One thing to think about too is not everything is black and white, where the applicant comes and then there's a ruling. Often, as in the case in HPP, you work with the applicant. They come and they go, hmm, I, and then the recommendation from staff HPP, in this case, worked with the applicant in a meeting situation to modify their application so that it would go through. And maybe staff didn't think about it, or the applicant think about it. And in the case of HPP, it's more of an historical perspective, but the planning commission could do the same thing. So it's not always just yes or no and onto the appeal if they don't like it.
I think we're going to have an answer here.
Probably more of an observation. When we did Title X and you adopted it, we did, to Mike's point, have many more applications that went to an administrative level. So those are all, as Mike said, appealable to planning commission. What gets to planning commission has gone through a very extensive review process by staff. A lot of times we are talking with other board members, other staff members across the city, city manager's office. So when we bring something to planning commission, we feel, we try very hard not to bring anything to planning commission that we think is not going to be successful.
So most cases, I think they agree with you, but every once in a while,
Yeah.
there's a disagreement. It doesn't happen often, but it does.
That is true. So we're really talking about that small percentage. I just wanted to point those, those out.
Thank you. All right, counsel, any other questions?
I just have a comment. I think, again, we all need to remember when we're making these decisions, whether they're quasi-dutational, if they come to us, even if you might have that bias or you've heard people talking, you have to keep the entire city of Littleton in your, in your thoughts, or in the thoughts. When you're making that decision, that it's not just going to impact this one little area, but how is it going to impact the entire city? And maybe that'll help you, it helps me with quasi-duticial decisions if that's, if that's making you a little.
Depends on the criteria.
Yes, based on the criteria, yeah, but also thinking about the entire city as a whole, so.
So as I said at the beginning of this, this is kind of an odd general business item because it normally would have been a consent agenda item where we just move on, ordinance on to second reading here. So what we have is basically an option for two of them. So we'll have a, a motion on one of the ordinances. We can vote and see how that goes. Council, Councilmember Valdez?
I'd like to do, make a motion.
Yes, Councilmember Valdez.
All right, I would propose the motion for option B. I move to approve ordinance zero-nine dash twenty twenty-three B. Is that right, B? On first reading approving amendments to Titles II and X of the Littleton City Code regarding the appeals process for quasi-duticial board and commission decisions.
Hi, second.
I think that was Councilmember Grove. She was at least the loudest. All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve this on first reading. So this is, we're not necessarily debating the ordinance night. We can have that after a public hearing next week or next regular meeting, whatever, sometime in the future, two weeks. So are there any questions or comments on just moving this forward to the next meeting? Councilmember Barr?
Yeah, this seems like the time. So I'll go ahead and make my comments, but I feel that option A, and actually a more stringent version of option A that I would want to propose, if this motion were to fail, would be my preference. I have a lot of reasons for it, but it really boils down to a couple of things. One, that Councilmember Grove already brought up, that there is extensive preparation on behalf of staff, bringing applicants to our authorities' boards and commissions already. By having council be a secondary option for which appeals may go to, A, I am also concerned about the bias in our decision-making process. B, I think we don't actually know our code as well as some of the authorities' boards and commissions that focus specifically on those things. See, we appoint these ABCs to be subject matter experts on these particular areas. And so by actually allowing them to have final decision-making abilities on some of these decisions, we are actually empowering them to make very clear and very well-thought-out decisions. By giving them the option to apparently deny and have the applicant appeal to us, it actually is taking away from their authority to make concrete decisions. And lastly, I just want to kind of remind all of us up here is that we're a policymaking group. We're not necessarily a policy interpretation body. What we're talking about here is policy interpretation on how well this building or that deck, you know, fits that particular piece of code. I see my job as making the policy about the deck code in the first place and not adjudicating the ten, twenty, twenty-five, fifty appeals that we may get in a given year on where that deck lives. I don't feel like that it gives, that is not us dictating or guiding the nature of development in our city in an appropriate way. It comes back to this piecemeal-by-piecemeal type work. It takes up staff time. It takes up our time, and that time can be used for, honestly, policymaking and lots, a lot bigger decisions than what a deck looks like. So I'm really opposed to going with option B.
Councilmember Driscoll?
I'll counter that a little bit. I'm opposed to option A for all those reasons. You know, the cost, the time for people to go through court is, a lot of times not realistic. So again, we got elected for, for these decisions, and I think option B is our better option.
Anyone else? Councilmember Valdez, you have a comment?
Might as well. I think I said at the, the study session, if we're making decisions on ordinances and we don't know the ordinance, then maybe we should read the ordinance. Because one thing, when it goes to the judge or the court, I doubt they know the ordinance. So we have the opportunity to read those things. And if we're making decisions based on ordinances that we don't know, then we should be making a decision, period. So it is our job to understand these kind of things. That's why we're here.
Councilmember Grove?
I support option B. I understand what you're saying, but I don't think we're going to see decks come to us. I, I think it's the biggies that may come to us, and I think it's going to be an exception. And I think it's putting a burden on an applicant to go straight to staff and that it's responsi, responsibility of elected, people elected us, they didn't elect the planning commission. We appoint them and they have a job to do. And I don't want to take away their authority, but it's only in extreme cases I think we're going to see things come to us. That's my opinion.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think that, you know, when I'm thinking about developers specifically, I think that they should have that one more option, maybe planning commission didn't get it right, maybe Board of Adjustments didn't get it right, whatever. They have that, they have that one last option to come to council before going to the court. And I think that's fair.
Anyone else? I'll just say that I support moving this forward to a second reading, and I'll have more to say it next time at the second reading. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve, what was it, ordinance nine B on first reading and move it to second reading. All right, open the vote. So vote is four is to approve it to, on first reading to move it forward.
The vote is six in favor with Councilmember Barr, voting no, the motion carries.
Thank you. All right, on to item ten of the agenda. This is time for ordinances on second reading and public hearing. Thank you, staff, for everything. We'll see you in a couple of weeks. All right, so, library team? Ordinance three of twenty twenty-three is an ordinance on second reading, amending Littleton City Code Title VI, Chapter IX, repealing Section VIb, parent five, to eliminate late charges on overdue library materials. So we talked about Title II, Title X, let's move on to Title VI here for a little bit. All right, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This item, this item presents a policy option that would actually enable Littleton to join a trend that is, is becoming a predominant practice, a little counterintuitive to me, I'll say, when I, when I first learned about it. But the more the library staff has talked about it, I think it's worthy of council's consideration. And I'll just say to lead this off, the reasons council would consider waiving fines on overdue library materials really, you know, does come down to increasing library use and increasing the circulation of our materials and saving some cost from the way that we do it today. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the guy who's been sitting in the back. Some of council may not know Rich Allen. Rich has served our library for, for many years, and we've had the privilege of his leadership as our interim library director for the past number of weeks. So I'm very pleased just to be able to highlight Rich and his work. And he, he worked very closely with our separating library director, Nancy Trim, to, to develop this policy option. And I'm pleased that he has the opportunity to present it to you this evening. Rich?
Thank you, council, for letting me speak tonight.
I think your mic's off. That's the, that's the click share for the computer. The mic is a different button.
On your stem of your.
You, you keep turning the presentation on and off. It's on now.
There we go. I could just yell. But, so thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight, and in respect to the late hour, I'll be brief. But, so some context for where we stand now at the library with overdue fines. We charge twenty cents a day, starting from the day they're due for overdos. It's in mid nineteen eighties, senior residents who are sixty-five and over have been exempt from those fines. So we're operating on like a forty-year policy here. There's a long story as far as why we chose to exempt seniors from fines rather than kids, which seems to be the norm. I'll just sum it up by saying it wasn't really a very valid reason from the communications I heard. It was just kind of a, sure, that sounds fun. So it's, it's kind of a faulty policy, in my opinion, if that way. It's not really on a whim that we're wanting to go fine-free. It's not like it's a trendy thing or a fad. This graphic, just nationwide, it's not a obviously comprehensive picture of every library in the United States, but you see, there's a large number of libraries across the nation, from small rural libraries to large metro, New York, Boston libraries, that are going fine-free. The map here shows the green icons are fine-free libraries, the orange icons are partially fine-free, most likely exempting children's materials, and the red is not fine-free at all. On a more local level, this information changes pretty quickly. As of about a year ago, sixty-seven percent of libraries and systems in Colorado were completely fine-free. That number has changed. Just recently, Aurora just went fine-free, and there's another library system out west who has gone fine-free. So that number keeps climbing. It's probably closer to seventy percent now of Colorado library systems are fine-free. On a more local level here, you can see our Denver metro area, we are surrounded by libraries who've gone fine-free. Some of the exception, if you can barely see us through that little yellow graphic surrounded by red, the exception is Douglas County to the south of us, still charge fines, and Inglewood just to the north of us, still charge fines. There's three common assumptions and actually fallacies about how overdue fines work. If you ask people, why should we charge overdue fines, you're going to probably get one of these three answers, and none of them actually hold any water. People will say, well, we need overdue fines to teach people responsibility. Fines actually interfere with the essential mission of libraries, it's to provide access to everybody. And if you can't get everybody in, you're not teaching anybody anything. That's just basic demographics. Children and teens are the most penalized. They're beholden to parents or caregivers to get their materials back on time. They aren't responsible for those materials. They may try to be, but they're still beholden to adults to help them get those materials back. And frankly, teaching responsibility isn't in our mission. That shouldn't be the role of the public library. That comes down to my own personal, that's a family issue. That's a community issue. We are not there to wag our fingers and dictate what is and what isn't responsible behavior. And to add to that, if you get a kid who gets their card in trouble and they never come back again, you're not going to have the opportunity to teach them anything, honestly. They're just going to see the library as a place I got in trouble at, and we may never see them again. The second misconception about overdue fines and how they work is items get returned faster. People bring stuff back more often if we have overdue fines. Research, and as Jim was saying, it's counterintuitive. Research shows there's no behavior change before or after eliminating overdue fines. People aren't returning them faster. Actually, some libraries had more materials returned after eliminating fines just because people felt they could come back and bring those things back without penalty. The only thing I did discover with this, where fines make a difference, is if it is an exorbitant amount. If you, when you get up to like a dollar or more a day for an overdue item, that wakes people, like, yeah, I better get that back. We don't want to go down that road. That's a lot to charge for an overdue book as a dollar a day. And the second misconception, I'm sorry, the third misconception is that overdue fines will generate revenue to benefit the library. A lot of our patrons in the community are under the impression that overdue fines do go directly to the library. They, you hear it all the time at the desk saying, oh, I don't mind paying this. It helps you guys out. Like, hmm, it might indirectly. You know, it goes into the general fund, helps a lot of things out, but it's not really directly to the library. And what we discovered, and what a lot, a lot of libraries are discovering, is it actually costs more to collect the fines than the amount you're collecting. By the time you add in time spent in interaction with the person at the desk, labor costs, bookkeeping, all those things, you're actually losing money charging fines. Some benefits of a fine-free library, as Jim mentioned earlier, the number one is it increases library usage. We want people in the door. You know, that's, that is what we want. We had everybody, if I had my choice, everybody in Littleton would have a library card, they'd be in the door every day. Because they can. There's no blocks to their access. And increases social equity. These two are closely tied. You know, people who suffer most from overdue fines are people, low-income families, people of color. We don't want to block access for anybody, but especially for people who are already struggling with social inequity. As I mentioned already, if it's fiscally sound, the cost to collect fines is actually greater than the amount of fines recovered. It improves customer service. You can spend your time actually working with the patrons, meeting their needs rather than debating over, I turned that in Tuesday. No, it was Thursday. You know, by definition, you're just improving customer service across the board with that. And I think, remind me, the one of those valuable but underrated factors is it builds goodwill. These are our voters. And people vote for their experience at the library. They don't vote for people. They vote for how they felt at the library, how welcome they were. This suggests a little, some numbers about the fiscal impacts. As you can see, the percentage of the city budget that is generated by overdue revenue is always less than point one, or one-tenth of one percent. It's pretty negligible. This is a list of fiscal impacts. I'm going to kind of go through all of it, but the main point of this is, again, we're spending more money through payroll, labor, supplies than we are taking in. It's just, we're not gaining anything revenue-wise from this. So implementation, this change will only affect overdue fines. If people lose an item or if they damage an item, they take it to the beach and it gets washed out to sea, they'll, they'll still be responsible for the cost of those items. We'll still continue to send overdue notices just so people know, like, hey, you've got this checked out just in case you forgot. There won't be any charge attached to it, but they will still be letting them know. And if approved, we'll work with our Marvett Library Network Consortium to waive the existing overdue fines that are already in place. We'll set new lending rules that will eliminate overdue fines, and we'll share the fine-free message with the community. As far as implementation, if a council were to approve this tonight, tomorrow morning, we could be fine-free. I've already, we've got, we've been in touch with our consortium, and they said, what would it take? He said, we'll push the medical forical button. It'll be fine-free. After twenty-four hours, those lending rules will go into effect, and then it'll all come down to communicating with the public and the paperwork end of it as far as changing the wording of our notices and those kinds of things. These are some stories of impact from, patrons have shared with us about how overdue fines affect them. I won't go through them all. I'll just go through slides slowly. There is one particularly poignant story that sticks with me, though, that's in your packet. And it made the biggest impression on me of any story that any patron told me. It was that, we were, we often do our food for fines thing around the holidays, where patrons can, in lieu of paying overdue fines, can donate food to us, and we take it to the local food bank. So we're very excited about that. And a patron came to the desk, and she's had some overdue fines. Our assistant supervisor, she's very energ- Our assistant supervisor, she's a very energetic person, just was very excited. You know, we can pay this down with food donations, and the patron told us was, we're already using the food bank. We can't afford to donate food, because we're already a customer of them. And it just kind of takes the wind out of your sails, like, ugh, you know? So, I mean, we ended up waiving that patron's fines, but, you know, those stories aren't as uncommon as you might think. We hear a lot of stories at the desk. I know some of these are in your packet. These are how these, eliminating fines will align with council goals, as far as financial sustainability, more accessible library-museum programs, and good governance. So, again, in summary, Bemis library staff are proposing to amend the city code to eliminate overdue fines. Any questions?
Any questions, counsel? Councilmember Valdez?
Mayor, Rich, at what point, though, would you stop lending to somebody if they are habitual?
So, our process right now is, they haven't returned it, we send a reminder, hey, your stuff's out. Two weeks later, we remind them again with a little bit less friendly letter. Hey, we really need this stuff back. 30 days, they get billed for the item. And at that point, they are stopped from lending.
If we waive the fees, though, at what point, somebody doesn't bring back a book? Then they come back and borrow another one, and they don't return it?
If they haven't brought their things back, and they're still outstanding, we won't lend. It gets to the point, where it gets to the point where the item is billed for, not, like, they haven't brought it back, we're assuming you're not bringing it back, now we're billing you X amount of dollars for that item because we need to replace it. They can't borrow at that point.
That policy's not gonna change.
So if they're constantly bringing it back late, that's not...
Well, late is one thing, but they're bringing it back. But I'm talking about, they don't return it at all.
If they don't return it, they aren't able to borrow.
Do we have a number? I mean, I'm thinking for the city attorney here, because if I treat one person and say, well, you didn't return those last three items, and the next person loans, we loaned them something, they haven't returned five items, I mean, do we have something in writing that says, hey, at some point, we have to cut it off?
Yeah, right now, our policy is...
Not right now. I'm talking about going forward.
Yeah, but the policy will be very similar. It's, if you have $10 or more on your account outstanding, you're kept from borrowing. Now, we can amend that amount anything that we want, because that was based on the overdue model. But for our purposes, if you have a lost item that you have not brought back, or not lost, but just are bringing it back, it doesn't matter what the amount of the item is. It's the fact that you have outstanding materials that will keep them from borrowing.
I guess my point is, I just want to make sure we're treating everybody fair.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't want to not loan, of course.
Right.
But if somebody's abusing, you know, this liberal thing that we have here, I just want to make sure we're not treating somebody more harsh than another person, so what...
Rich, at what point do you consider materials lost?
We consider materials lost at 30 days.
Okay.
So that's when they get the billing notice.
That would be when they can't borrow anymore.
So that one kid borrows a book, doesn't bring it back, then it's 31 days later. They're not allowed to borrow any...
Well, if they bring it back, we're good to go.
But they have not brought it back.
Okay, so they haven't brought it back.
My point is, they have not brought something back, so are we, on Day 31, saying, no, you can't borrow any more books?
Yeah, Day 31, if that child comes to the desk and says, hey, I'd like to check this out. Say, you know what, you've got, have you doing it checked out still to your account? It's been billed. I can't check out to you today. Are your parents around? And chances are, they, oh, I forgot I had that checked out, and they go get it, and good to go.
Okay, and that's, we have that in writing, though? I mean, I just don't want to abuse it ourselves by forcing it on, I'm talking about going forward, though.
Did you say the current policy is going forward?
That's gonna remain the same, then?
Yes, correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Milliman?
I'm just curious. It sounds like Denver Public Library does, has no fees as well. Is that right?
To my knowledge, that's correct. They started off with going fine-free just for kids' materials, and I think they are now completely fine-free.
Does this seem to be like a nationwide trend, then?
Very much so. It really started getting hold, actually, in my consciousness, around 2012. And the Colorado State Library did a long four-year, five-year data study on it. And it's, the trends hold up across the nation, as far as whether it's small and rural, or whether it's large metro, northeast, southwest, it's very much people are peoples. It's the one unifying thing in this country. You know, in a matter of demographic, it seems to hold true that the fines are a barrier.
And say, within these library systems, Marmot or Libby or whatever, if the person is, you know, hasn't returned their book 40 or 50 days or whatever, can they go, would they be able to go get a book from a participating library that we're in the system with?
It depends, yeah. So let's say, like, a Bemis patron has a card that's delinquent. They could go get a card at Steamboat Springs, and they'd still be able to get a card there. So maybe a closer-at-home example, yeah, they could still go to Inglewood and get a card.
But they wouldn't be able to get it through Bemis, through the Marmot system, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Any other comments, questions, or questions? I have one question, a real quick one. Will you still be doing the Food for Fines, even though there's no fines?
And that's a really good question, because that's occurred to me as well. I think it would be still a great community service to do, because I know it really benefits the Life Center Food Bank. I mean, we used to be a food drop-off point in general.
I would like to see that, is my point.
We were just a donation place. We got a little out of hand, because people wanted to throw in all kinds of stuff in that food barrel, but, yeah, we'd be open to the idea. As far as just a general community giving, as opposed to a fine-waving part of it.
Sounds good. Any other questions? Seeing no questions, as this is an ordinance on second reading, we need to have a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing at 9:22, see if anyone signed up. No one signed up. Would anyone like to speak to this ordinance? Seeing no one wanting to speak to this ordinance, I will close the public hearing at 9:22. All right.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, please.
All right, I move to approve Ordinance 03-2023, an ordinance on second reading, amending Littleton City Code Title 6, Chapter 9, repealing Section 6B5, to eliminate late charges on overdue library materials.
We have a motion and a premature second? All right, all right, we have a motion and a second. Approve an ordinance 3. Is there any discussion? Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I love this. I'm so glad you brought this forward. I mean, this is in line with equity. I mean, it's thinking about making services available to everyone and taking into account variant circumstances, which I think we need. I also love that this assumes the best in people, and I think you're right, we're assuming trust. And that means so much in terms of creating healing connection in our community. I also love that the research backs it up, and that it saves money. The idea that we can free up some of those library folks who have advanced degrees also, to actually like help people with their research projects and finding things, instead of them having to manage all the fines. So I love this. Thank you, and I'll support it for sure.
Any other comments? I'll just, oh, Councilmember Grove? No, I thought you, oh, you're ready to vote. I'll just echo Mayor Protem's comments. I think this is a great change, yeah. I'm not gonna look at Steve, so, all right. I'm gonna open the vote, so...
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much. Yeah, so start that tomorrow, right? That's what you said, tomorrow? Yeah, the ordinance won't go into effect until... All right, last up on the agenda is Number 11, which is adjournment. It's 9:24. No further action. We are adjourned.